Good morning and welcome to the November 5th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. Ask custom air if we could please rise for a moment of silence. Supervisor Simon, can you please lead us in the pledge?
How do we get?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there any extra items? Five, approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are seen as non-courting diversion. These items can be moved by one motion unless somebody from the board wishes to pull an item for further clarification or questions. Anybody from the board wishes to pull an item? Any public comment on the consent agenda? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.17.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I think we can go to our 7.5 item since we're early. Consideration of Board Appointment to Delegate and Alternate to the Rural Community Representatives, RCRC Board of Directors for 2020, and B, Board of Appointment of Delegate and Alternate to the Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, Board of Directors for 2020, and C, Board Appointment for Delegate and Alternate for the Rural Counties Representative of California Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, ESJPA, Board of Directors for 2020. So this is, if we have any comments or questions from the board, I know right now Supervisor Crandall is the delegate with Sabatier as the alternate. Do we wish to keep those positions?
Yeah, I don't mind.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you have a preference of being the one or the other?
I think we've kind of shared the seats. I know I've gone at least two, maybe three times with you, or by myself, and so I think that we've been working it out and just like to continue it that way.
You know, a lot of other counties, they'll go together sometimes too, so I mean, that's, you know, something we may do as well, so.
Is there any public comment on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action, and I believe this has to be done with three different motions.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to continue the RCRC Board of Directors with E.J. Crandall as the delegate and Bruno Sabatier as the alternate.
I have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Want to do B? They're all, you guys were the...
I move to appoint Supervisor Crandall and myself as the alternate, or as the delegate and myself as the alternate to Golden State Finance Authority Board of Directors for 2020.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Move to appoint Supervisor Crandall as the delegate and myself as the alternate to the Rural Counties Representatives of California Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority Board of Directors for 2020.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Just trying to move a little slower because we have more.
We need an alternate on that too. Last year I know when we did, sorry if I could open discussion on that again. I know that Lars, I was the, the delegate and Lars was the alternate, and Lars attended all the meetings on the, for the ESJPA.
He actually does.
My mistake on pushing that one that quickly.
Yeah.
That was in the memos as well.
I was thinking about that.
That was Lars and yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need a motion then to open it back up? Okay.
I'll move to open it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we're opening up 7.5, the C portion of it.
Yeah, so if you're reading here, the delegate and alternate was, I was the delegate and Lars was the alternate. We added last year and we had to come back and do it twice last year too, so.
Second.
We're getting better at it. We didn't have to do it at another meeting at least this time, so smaller gap.
Right, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, which was great because now we're at 9:05. We're going to move on to public input, and I have one public input. Joan Moss. Rob Brown, District 5, big question.
Joan Moss.
In three minutes.
Madam Chair, point of order, you know what this is about and you know this is not under the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, and I'm respectfully requesting that you honor that.
Anita, are we able to do that?
I don't know what the topic is.
The topic is...
It's not something that...
Go ahead.
That is in our, that we have...
It's in our review.
Yeah.
Your board takes public comments on matters within your jurisdiction.
Okay, and this is not within our jurisdiction?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Not here.
You're not going to allow me to ask a question?
Well, we can't answer the question, so. I think you need to go down with this, this is, the Board of Supervisors cannot make decisions on this topic that you have, that are in front of us.
We can't even hear it.
We can't, yeah, it's nothing that we can control.
I had more than one topic to talk about.
Okay.
Both of them are from the same letter.
Three, I have a new topic too.
Okay, what's your other third topic?
I would like to, I'd like to ask all three questions.
What's the third question? We'll maybe start with that.
Anyway, I'll report to my attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. So let's move to calendars. Supervisor Sabatier.
Just as my calendar turns off, let me get right to that. So I lost my computer yesterday, or it lost me, so let me see if I can figure out how to maneuver through this. Later this afternoon, I'm meeting with our Community Development Director, and then moving on to Ag Department to meet with Janice Luke to make sure that everything is set up for our November 15th Hemp, Industrial Hemp Ad Hoc Committee. On the 7th, I will be going to Judges Breakfast in the morning. Looks like I'm pretty empty on this week at this moment in time. I'm going to, thinking about going to San Francisco, but need to figure out what that might look like and what our restrictions are of too many people showing up in one place.
I can resolve that for you.
Okay.
After, after looking at Anita's email and looking at their agenda, and looking at how our hands are tied and we're just going to go down there and spectate, I'm not going.
And we'll be discussing it on the agenda a little bit later anyways.
I'm going to find another opportunity to pass the message on.
And then also, the City Clear Lake has invited me to help prepare their Christmas parade, which will be on December 7th, Saturday, December 7th, so I'll be there to help them prepare for that, a little traditional event that we go through. Don't have anything over the weekend at this moment in time, and back to meet with Carol again on Monday, no, because that's Veterans Day, so I guess I keep going. I have Energy Innovation Meeting happening on Tuesday, the 12th, which I'm really excited about, just looking at opportunities of which direction to go rather than being reliant on PG&E. On Wednesday, looks like I'm stacked with LTA APC meeting in the morning, and then having a hemp meeting at 2:00, which I'm curious if that just wasn't moved over.
Okay, is it 2:00 or 10:00?
No, that, that one I think was moved on Friday. I think I originally put it because we wanted it on the 13th, but we can't do it on the 13th.
What time though? You said 10:00.
It's on Friday at 10:00.
Okay, you said 2:00.
I know, but I also said Wednesday, so.
Mess with me now. It's bad enough I got Joan.
Don't listen to me at this moment in time. Just ignore it. On Thursday, planning to go with Supervisor Crandall to a meeting for the Potter Valley Meeting. Looking forward to that as well, and then a council meeting over in Clear Lake in the evening. And on Friday, this time you can listen, at 10:00 AM Industrial Hemp Meeting, and then also hoping to go to the Leadership Summit over at New Paradigm College on the 15th. And I will be going to the Youth Center Spaghetti Feed on Saturday, and then back on the 18th to be prepared for our 19th meeting. That's all I can find on this new device that I just pulled out of nowhere.
Supervisor Simon.
Board meeting today, be back in District tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be in Sacramento for some meetings Friday. Have some meetings with constituents down at the Gibson Museum. On Saturday, don't have anything in the morning, but in the evening have Silvergrind Bingo for, for our local high school. I think there's another event too, I was planning on going, but now we're double booked because of the Kincaid Fire and the rescheduling, was also the Adventist Health Gala, see who can get sent to that. On Monday, Veterans Day, obviously be, you know, thanking all the veterans that I can for their service here, for our, for our country and their sacrifices. Tuesday, have the South Main Annexation Committee meeting in the afternoon. Next Wednesday, the 13th, have Lake Transit Authority Area Planning Council later that evening, Lower Lake Action Committee Group. And then Thursday, the 14th, we'll have the Math, Middletown Area Town Hall. Friday, we'll have office hours in Lower Lake on the 15th, and then I have on my calendar a Taking Action Initiative Meeting, I'll follow up on that on the 15th in the afternoon too. I don't know what that, what that one is right now. And then the 16th, 17th, don't have anything, back here on the 18th for meeting with Carol, and then preparing for the 19th meeting.
Supervisor Brown.
Laugh because I do that too.
So, so I've got a couple meetings scheduled for this afternoon, depending upon what time we finish up here with staff, and then I'd like to reschedule with Andrew and Michael and regarded, or we had a meeting that we were scheduled last week, but with the power outage and everybody, it was just, we had to cancel it, so I'm going to try to reschedule that maybe for this next week if possible. And then I won't be going to San Francisco as originally planned on Thursday, I'll be in the office. Then Friday, I have the hemp meeting at 2:00 and at 10:00.
We'll see you at one of those.
And, and Veterans Day Celebration on, on Wednesday, or on Monday. Also, I have a, I have down here to, I'm being on the Bill Conwell Show on KPFZ, so we'll see how that goes too. And, so, okay, this is really going to complicate things. Is it the 15th or the 8th, the meeting?
15.
The 15th, okay, for sure.
Yes, not the 8th.
Okay, because I just had Friday and I didn't put, then I was forgetting that there was a two-week delay here, okay.
10:00 AM Encore at 2:00.
Got it. Okay, that's it.
Supervisor Crandall.
So today, after the meeting here, there's some meetings that I'll have to, tasks I'll have to attend to that were either pushed back or something during the power safety shut offs or whatever the case may be. Tomorrow, I have a meeting in Special Districts in the morning. I have the Earth Meeting in the afternoon, and Spring Valley, I'll be back to La Cern for the barbecue. They're having a barbecue, the one I think we were talking about earlier, and it's just for the community and the school. I'll be on my way back out to Spring Valley that day, and then Thursday, so that's for CSA Meeting, Thursday I'll be at the Potter Valley Ad Hoc Committee with Bruno. Friday, I'll be in the area with constituents on the North Shore. On Veterans Day, I'll be speaking at Canuckdie with the veterans, they're having a, I guess it's not a celebration, but an event there, and they asked me to speak to the, you know, to the veterans. Tuesday, the 12th, Energy Innovation Meeting. I don't have the time on this calendar, I have it on my, I use two different type of calendars.
That one is 2:00 PM.
It's 2:00 PM, that's what I thought, 10:00 or 2:00, I knew, because I kept hearing Thursday, the 14th, meeting with Round Valley. Will be going to Round Valley to meet about the planning agreement for the Potter Valley Project, and especially in regards to Lake Pillsbury and Scott Dam. And Friday, the 15th, Lake Leadership Summit, and then back here on Monday, the 18th, for a meeting with the CAO, and a meeting on the 19th here.
Okay. My calendar, after the meeting today, I'll be catching up on emails and phone calls, and then I will be attending the City of Lakeport Council Meeting tonight. Tomorrow, I'll be in the office, and then I have a meeting with a constituent at 11:00. And then I was hoping to attend the La Cern Elementary Block Party, because it's supposed to be the pilot program, and I wanted to see how it was going to work to be able to take that around the county, but I'm going to be attending the meeting for the 11th Street Corridor in Lakeport instead. On Thursday, I have a meeting with a representative from T-Mobile, and then have a conference call at 11:00. And then we'll be attending the Lake County Theater Company Chicago Show on Thursday. Friday, I have meeting with constituents in the morning, I'm going to go out and check out the new culvert out in Scotts Valley, I'm very excited about that. And then attending the Runway Show for Saturday Lakeside that evening. Saturday, I will be attending the Adventist Gala. On Sunday, the 10th, is a breakfast in Kelseyville, it's in support of the Sheriff's Activity League for our youth, so they can have programs free of charge for them. And then an event at 3:00 for Casa, Sips and Sweets, and that's in Yucaya. On Monday, the 11th, my husband's leaving for Africa for three months, so we'll be getting him off for that. And then I'll, hoping also to attend the Veterans Day Celebration at Canuckdie, the Clear Lake High School Jazz Band plays for that, and it's quite, quite awesome to see the kids and the veterans together. And then on Tuesday, I have Agenda Review at 11:30, a South Main Street Annexation Meeting at 2:00, a Fire Board Meeting at 5:00. Wednesday, the 13th, a First Five Meeting at 2:00. Thursday, I will be, the 14th, attending the Mom and Baby Substance Exposure Initiative Group from 8:00 to 12:00, and then attending 100 Women that evening. On Friday, the 15th, I will be on the radio at 1:00 PM, talking about our homeless neighbors and what we could do to help support them. On the 16th, I will be attending a President's Roundtable for Serotimus. And then back here on Monday, the 18th, I have a meeting with the Sierra Club that afternoon, and then meeting on Tuesday. Okay with that, we'll get back to our agenda, our 6.2 item, our 9:10 AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing the South Lake County Fire Protection District for 50 Years of Ambulance Service. Do we have anybody from?
So you don't have anybody, you're all on fires.
We're all fighting the fire.
I called yesterday that no one was going to be here, so my plan is to read the proclamation, and then I'll present it down to the South Lake County Fire Protection District Board down there, so. Good morning.
Whistleblower, you better go, get that.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake State of California, Proclamation Recognizing the South Lake County Fire Protection District for 50 Years of Ambulance Service. Whereas the community and communities within the South Lake County Fire Protection Districts 293 square miles have received 50 years of contiguous, or contiguous, yeah, contiguous ambulance service. And whereas the South Lake County Fire Protection District, Middletown Fire Department had privileged contiguous, provided contiguous ambulance service since 1969. And whereas the Fire Department members that were trained, supported, and started this service included, but were not limited to Ken McNamara, Andy Pedro, Paul Marquette, Bob Adams, Jim Breland, Chuck Crowfoot, Murillo Albo, Norman Evans, Leland Miller, Charlie Wooton, Sheldon Bell, Dale Strickler, Ernie Olson, Reed Hardister, Don Emerson, George Williamson, Andy Pedro, Ray Moody Jr., Eustace Messer, Floyd Kibbe, Paul Marquette, Sue Evans, Bob Colter, and John Irwin Sr. And whereas the original Fire Department members were trained to the highest standards in 1969 to deliver ambulance services. And whereas the Fire Department Delivery Care has grown from the delivery of oxygen to the most advanced standards of today. Whereas this service provides, the 45 years since 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized the third week in May of each year to be EMS Week, to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work that they do in our nation's communities. Whereas this service precedes the 39 years since 1980, the State EMS Authority enacted Health and Safety Code Title 22, Section 1797.201 and 1797.224, recognizes their contiguous and continuous service for perpetuity. Therefore, be it proclaiming, the Board of Supervisors in partnership with South Lake County Fire Protection District declares the 5th Day of November 2019 is dedicated to fire emergency medical providers, citizens, employees, that have provided 50 years of contiguous ambulance service to their citizens in their area, passed and adopted this day, the 5th Day of November 2019, and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. So I get a picture?
Yeah, with you.
All right.
Okay, our 6.3 item, 9:15 AM, Consideration of Continuation of a Local Health Emergency and Order Prohibiting the Endangerment of the Community Through the Unsafe Removal Transportation and Disposal of Fire Debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire. Dr. Pace, if you want, you can come sit with us up here.
Good morning, Gary Pace, Public Health Officer of the County, and basically I'm here to request extending the proclamation, this emergency proclamation due to significant health risks because of the incomplete cleanup of the 17 properties that's continuing to be an issue.
Okay, so there's 17 properties that still need to be cleaned up? Do we have any idea of the timeline?
Well, Jasjit has been in contact with the folks, and they sort of keep kicking, yeah, he's, he's sort of the expert on this. They keep kicking the can down the, down the road. We're going to schedule a call with them later on today to see what's going on, because they, you know, there's been some issues around the kind of cultural issues and getting, getting some of their equipment in there and some of the other things, and so they claim they keep sort of getting some of them resolved, and then it keeps going down the road, and so I don't know if you want the specifics, Jasjit's probably...
Good morning, Jesse with Environmental Health. Little background, last December, when Cal Recycle halted their program due to some compromised roads due to some heavy rain and tough terrain in the Mendocino Forest. But when condition got a little better, Cal Recycle, Cal OES representative came to our county, and we took them for a site visit in the middle of April to assess the situation because they have to cross some creeks and some very challenging roads. The initial plan was to come back and start, resume the cleanup process in June. Since June, I've been in touch with Cal Recycle every two weeks, because according to what Cal Recycle telling us all along is that they didn't realize that they need a, a permit through United States Forest Services, which is a federal permitting process using the roads. And so far, I've been hearing because due to environmental review and some road use permits, and there's some culture and biological aspect of permitting this use permit, and they're still working on it. Actually, last September, on 18th, we set up a conference call with some representatives from the other departments, and Cal OES and Cal Recycles, and we still on the same, we still process, we are getting closer, we're getting closer. So that's where we stand, and, and I kind of offer Dr. Pace that if he likes to join me, and we can do another conference call.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier.
What happens if the conference call leads to no further action from them? Do we have the ability to do the abatement ourselves?
It's, the board has to decide, because since it was a, let me back off a little bit, since it was requested by the county for assistance from Cal OES. So there is an agreement with the county and Cal OES. It's a Cal OES, basically a Cal OES program where all these folks who's lost their homes have been registered into the cleanup process.
So there may be the potential for, because what I'm looking at is what's the potential for the harm to the environment for not doing this cleanup for as long as it's happened? Do we have the ability to go in there and do the cleanup ourselves and obtain the reimbursement through Cal OES and Cal Recycle? Because at this point, we're, we're just on a treadmill, it's been 17 since January, and it's been, it's been a while.
I think it's out of my scope, it's board has to decide.
But, but is there the possibility, because they are registered with Cal OES, that if we did the abatement, that there would be a reimbursement?
I cannot answer that question, because it has to go through the process of Cal OES and Cal Recycle, I mean, how the whole process set up, so.
And they always have that caveat that you may not get reimbursed, so.
Yeah, and in the meantime, as a, as a county representative, we have a trail of emails and what we have been asking and requesting, and all we can do as a county representative can still advocate, hey, we still have these properties need to be cleaned up. And all these folks are trying to be in compliance, registered to the state to be part of this cleanup process.
There's, unless it's changed, you, it's a good question, because we talked about that with the Valley Fire stuff, that what happens if we just go do it? And that does, we do risk, at that time, we did risk not getting reimbursed, because there's a, there's a lot of checks and balances that the state has in place, it's a reason it costs, you know, 10 times what it should cost normally, but, but it is a reality that, you know, if it's not done right, and Anita probably went on this, but I think Kathy would probably have a lot to say about that too.
Because she knows the reimbursements and...
She does, yeah.
Yeah, that process.
Yeah.
Supervisor Simon.
My suggestion, maybe, E.J., obviously this is your district over there, helping getting that cleaned up, and maybe getting the supervisor involved in the phone calls and...
Would love to do that.
Pushing that thing and getting the information out there.
Yeah, no, I have no problem.
To your district too, maybe two supervisors on the call might help move it forward.
Definitely, we can coordinate with both.
Yeah.
Let me know if you want me to be there.
Yeah, let's, let's do, let's do a call with them.
I can set up today, I can work on it today.
Let's do that, and then from there...
And this time, we'll show up.
Thank you, sir.
Who's handling it? Who from Cal OES are you working with?
Cal, I'm working, right now, my contact is Operational Chief is Robert Haley from Cal Recycle.
Cal Recycle, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is a division of Cal OES, so.
Yeah, Cal OES, we, I was in touch with Sean Smith.
Okay, yeah.
Anything from the board?
And I'd be happy to, I mean, you guys can obviously handle it, but if anything, you know, let me know, because I know all the guys that are involved.
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, my understanding, you know, obviously, you start at the top, you know, Mark Guerducci, and work your way down there, let them know the situation, I mean, it has been a long time, so.
It is.
It would be, you know, great if E.J. and whoever else is involved can really make those phone calls, start to push them.
And just one, one observation from Environmental Health, if, if Cal Recycle going through all these permit through the United States Forest Services, so if we take matter in our hands, so we also have to go through all that process. So let's see how far they are in this process.
Okay, set that up today then.
Is there any questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay, see no movement, I'll bring it back. Nope.
I would just like to say too, that would be really helpful to have you up, because with the rains coming, you know, it's going to slow it all, it's like a window right now to, to really make some progress on it, so that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Just one last comment, I don't mean to complicate anything either, but maybe bringing Scott DeLeon into this conversation, he might give you some information that also might help to use, to combat their, their stonewalling there, because I think there are some situations where it's opposite, where they should have been talking to the county a little bit, so maybe a conversation with Scott too might give you some ammunition against them of slowing that project down.
Okay, there's nothing further than I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to continue local health emergency and order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation, and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our 6.4 item, our 9:20 AM item, public hearing, this item will be continued to the November 19th, 2019 meeting, consideration of resolution amending the master fee schedule for department services rendered by the county. So I need a motion to move, to continue this item. So I need a motion to move, to continue this item until November nineteenth.
So moved.
With time cert.
Which item is it? I'm sorry.
Master fee schedule.
I'm sorry, I heard seven people tell me.
Six-point-four master fee schedule. Do I need to open up the public or no? Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Seven-point-two, are you ready for that one? Continue from October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen meeting, discussion and consideration of letter of intent to sell seven-one-seven-five South Center Drive, Clear Lake, to Lake Transit Authority. Supervisor Sabatier.
So I've been working with LTA to continue the project that they've been working on, which is building a bus depot, and their interest is to build this bus depot on South Center Drive, which is located in Clear Lake and is the property owned by the county. At this point, the county has been doing work to split off this property because it's part of a larger, very complex property that does not look like anything a property should look like. It looks like it's grown legs as we've been splitting off bits and pieces here. But, so right now, I was hoping that we would have either the ability to surplus the property and then move on to sale, or the ability to have a letter of intent, but I don't have any of those things in front of you. So what I'd like to do is still have a discussion about, is there still interest in this board to move forward before we start doing way more than we should? Is there still interest in surplusing this property and selling it?
Supervisor Brown?
Is, that's the property on the corner, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So this has been an ongoing discussion for many years before, before any of the members are up here. And so I just want to go back to some of the discussion because we might, we might be covering some old ground here, but a couple of the things were leasing it to them for, you know, the dollar a year or whatever, you know, some reasonable amount. Because if you, if we surplus it, maybe Anita can, can correct us if I'm wrong, but if you surplus it, then anybody can buy it.
And I'll let Anita answer that.
Okay, okay.
Anita?
Well, when it comes to certain kinds of property for certain kinds of purposes, there are exceptions that can be carved out. But what you're saying is a general rule is when you declare property surplus, it's put up for bid and anyone can buy it. But we'll be looking at what exceptions to that may be applicable, given that this is for a transit authority for a public transportation purpose. So if an exception applies, it doesn't have to be put out.
Yeah, that would be.
But absent that, it would have to be put out to the general public.
That would be best if, if they could do that, because they need it. I mean, it's right there next to the college, it's perfect location.
Right at the courthouse, right at AODS.
Right at the courthouse. But it's also part of a bigger discussion that we had on that road, that South Civic Center Drive, that go, it used to go to the freeway, actually, it used to go on the highway. That road is part of Clear Lake's system, but it'd be nice if they abandoned that and we could expand our parking lot in there and there would be access through there, an easement through there for the, for the Masonic Lodge, for the other property that's there.
So, so in the long run, without going too far into the weeds, that whole, a part of the ownership for the county is what's supposed to be a frontage road alongside the hospital and the Masonic Lodge. There is a easement for that at this moment in time, but eventually, with Caltrans plans, they want to put an overpass where the hospital is, which would make a ramp that turns people off the highway and brings them back to the shopping center. So that will, eventually, that will all be a road system.
In the event that hell does freeze over.
In forty years.
Yeah. In the meantime, you know, that parking is a, is a huge issue there for our facilities for the courts, so.
And I will say that I have.
It's a separate discussion.
I have heard the opposite, that parking is not necessarily an issue, in fact, that parking is mostly utilized by Canockti Education Center and the college, mainly because the college students don't have to pay to utilize that parking versus paying for the parking on the college campus itself.
We'll stick to this, this particular lot, but I'll show you on the map what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the, the parking in front of the courthouse, in front of the court. That's a problem, so.
And so basically, the discussion was to make sure that we still had an interest to work with LTA and, and look at doing a surplus or lease or whatever would be the best option.
I definitely do.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Madam Chair, I would suggest a discussion with the transit authority regarding the, the type of transportation plan they already have in place because such a transportation plan may provide an exception of the type I mentioned earlier.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate Bruno pushing this and getting on the agenda for the discussion. I know since I came on the board, one of the first meetings we were at, you know, we picked that location for the Lake Transit Authority, a good quality place, especially since now they punched that road through there, the new road for Clear Lake. It really gives an opportunity to open up a vein there that would take some of the traffic out the road, but also give a good depot opportunity, get the folks out of the parking lot up there at Walmart. So it is, you know, a good plan, it's a good area. I know the Lake Transit Authority are working hard. I know they're not asking for anything for free, they're just asking for a partnership to improve our transit authority. And Clear Lake is the most, the most rides happen in that area, in that city, and it would definitely help with some congestion problems that they're having down there. So I think it's a great opportunity. I know we've been waiting for some appraisals and other things to happen, and I know that's currently going on. So I am definitely in favor. I think this is a great opportunity for us to expand the transit authority here and help the folks that really need it to get around to their doctor's appointments, to work, also the college program that we have going on, supporting education. It's a good, it's a good project for the entire community.
Supervisor Brown, any further? Is there any public comment on this item?
We'll talk first.
If you could please state your name and then three minutes.
Good morning, I'm Tom Slate, and I was not familiar with this issue, but I'm sitting there listening to it, and I would just say, I want to point out for me personally, that it's very important to me and a lot of other people, but it's one person to come down and say that. And usually, I'm pretty self-sufficient, but once in a while, just something minor, I have my car worked on in one city and I need to get back and leave it there and I have to get home and unable to do that because of the, the transit authority. And so, just as one person, you know, perhaps nobody else is, is here to speak in, in favor of that. So, yeah, I don't like the crunchy sound that's, that's why I didn't do that. Anyway, just in favor of that and support the transit authority, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? See no movement, there's no action, I think we, you've received what you wanted to receive, I think.
So we can keep moving forward. Thank you.
How about we go to our seven-point-six item, discussion and consideration of area plan updates. Mike Glenn?
Good morning, Mike Glenn Delval, Community Development Director. So I am here today just to talk about timelines and the process of updating area plans. So my recommendation for step one in updating area plans is to hire a SEQA consultant. Historically, all area plans require an environmental impact report, and staff estimates that that cost will be about a hundred thousand, it could vary. But I recommend that we get them on board, one of the first initial steps, because if we hired them later on after the plan was created, it could add an additional year to the process. So my recommendation is to get them on board and so we can have them working on the environmental impact during the entire process of working on the area plan, which generally takes a year, it could take more than that. I believe the Middletown Area Plan Update Process took approximately four years, but generally, it takes about a year to do. And then after we get the SEQA consultant on board, I recommend that we have the initial community meetings at that point in time and ask them what has been working, what hasn't been working. Staff takes all of those notes and they go back and then they put the, incorporate all of those recommendations into the area plan. Then staff may need to do targeted site visits, they use the GIS system, and while they're updating the plan, recommendations for mapping updates, usually out of an area plan update, there is amendments to zoning as well as general plan land use designations. That's one of the primary reasons why environmental impact report is required. And then staff has to ensure that the area plan is consistent with all of the adopted codes as well as plans that have been adopted by the Board of Supervisors in the past. Once the initial draft is completed, then the meetings before the committee are held and the committee focuses on various topics, and that's where all of the, the policies and goals and some of the, where the mapping comes from for the area plan. Then there'll be various other meetings, you know, if there's any other changes, then we would continue to go back before the committee, present those changes or recommendations to them. I would say at this point in time is where the committee, you know, could do, that would be the time for them to do homework or to do, conduct other site visits, because then that's when they'll be, you know, reviewing the plan, saying, well, we'd like, you know, this area to be zoned this way, or, you know, these type of issues should be here. So that's the time for the committee members to really, they could do homework on their own at that point in time. Staff works with the IT Department for rack, mapping recommendations. And then after, towards the end, staff is the one that has to prepare all of the legal notices, has to be sent out to every single one of the property owners, there's a cost associated with that as well, the legal notice gets put in the newspaper. The staff has to prepare the final area plan, the staff reports, and they have to present all of that, along with the SEQA document, to the Planning Commission, as well as the Board of Supervisors. So staff's recommendation is that we start pursuing, if we get consensus, pursuing a SEQA consultant after the first of the year, to begin that process. And staff's, again, staff's recommendation is to work on one area plan at a time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I just had a question, did you find any opportunities for grant funding to be able to afford that consultant?
No, I have not.
Because I know we talked about grant funding last time to see if we can either enhance what resources we may have, or maybe even add an additional area plan to work on, just wondering if there's anything out there that can help us at least afford the one, if not do a little bit more.
There is one grant that staff is pursuing, but it's to update the zoning ordinance.
So it would be doing a portion of what the area plan does and some of that is also zoning ordinance?
The area plan provides recommendations, the zoning ordinance should be updated to, for this or that, but the amendment to the zoning ordinance is the only way for it to happen.
Gotcha.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, appreciate you bringing this back to us. I know this is something we want to get started on and, you know, from my understanding in the last discussion we had, you know, trying to stay focused, I think is the best way to do that, and starting with the oldest plan at this point, to help also with, you know, staff constraints and other needs right now. I think this is a good approach. Obviously, we never want to pass up any grant funding if it's out there as we go through it, but starting this process, you know, I appreciate the opportunity and the plan from Community Development to move forward with the oldest plan first and start to work our way up the line, and hopefully, we'll get better at it as we move through, and the updated ones will hopefully take a shorter time as we get one completed and move through the process. Everybody understands it, because this will be my first time going through it, and I know each, well, at least four people on this board, it'll be our first time. I know Rob has plenty of years of experience with it, but it'll be a new process for us also. Thank you for your recommendation, and I agree with it.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I have a question about, what was the second oldest plan? Was it Riviera, was it Cobb?
It's Lower Lake and then Cobb.
So they're not perfectly continuously connected, but they somewhat are. Just wondering, when it comes to the consultant, by adding some, an area for them to do their portion of it, because obviously, there's the meetings with the community, there's other work than just what the consultant would be doing, wondering if that can help us be better prepared for the next one by asking for them to do two rather than one? What, what would the cost difference be? Is it more efficient to ask them to do more at once rather than hiring them on two separate times?
When we seek quotes from the consultant, we can have that discussion, but staff's recommendation is use them as a SEQA consultant only. So they wouldn't be preparing the plan. The problem is, is these consultants are not familiar with all the local codes and ordinances, staff is. So staff's recommendation is that the consultant only work on the SEQA portion of the area plan.
But would it be useful if, let's say it's only a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and thirty thousand to do both Cobb and Lower Lake at once rather than a hundred thousand for Lower Lake, then do another one later on where it's another hundred thousand? And of course, that's if the price, the cost ends up being similar to that. Would it be okay to have a SEQA document for another area plan prepared and then do the area plan afterwards when we finalize, when we finalize Lower Lake to move on to the next one, just so we can have something to, to keep the momentum going? Is that a possibility?
They can't work on the SEQA document until they, they have to do it at the same time because it addresses directly the changes and impacts of the area plan itself.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, even though I've been through a few of these, they're all new, every one of them's new. Even if I've, you know, we've done the ones that we've been involved with, it's going to be all different because the process is different. The process, with all due respect to staff here, because they don't create the, the process, they just follow through with the process that's been imposed on us that, quite frankly, is designed for lack of planning, you know, to cause things to slow down. And it's, you know, it's, you can't get in a big hurry on this because nothing moves in a hurry when it involves SEQA and all sorts of crap that, that we're forced to do. So, you know, we'll just have to do what we can do. In the meantime, I, you know, I read the narrative that you had and I, I appreciate that. I have a different thought about it as far as the community members are more of an asset than they are a hindrance to it. You didn't use the word hindrance, but that's what, what's implied in there, that, you know, they're doing this and we need to be doing this. Well, you can't rely on staff for everything. They've got, they're here and then all of a sudden, they're shifted over here. And then all of a sudden, you got twelve, you know, cannabis guys up there, you know, that focused everybody's attention yesterday, and then you got this. So I think the public, the, the area of Cobb, who's already started on theirs, they've got some people that are highly qualified, we have former staff who's volunteered to come up there and help us through some of the process that we can do and have it done, and then we can give it to you rather than you give it to us and then let us figure it out later. So I think, I think there's some benefit to having the, the community involved up there right now and not wait for, you know, literally years going, going by before it happens again. So I think if we want to move forward with Lower Lake, I appreciate what you're saying, I don't think it can be done because there's going to be a million excuses as to why it can't be done, as opposed to, well, it can't be done this way, but let's try to figure a way to make it work this way. That's not going to happen. So let's, let's just move forward with Lower Lake and we'll move forward with Cobb to the best that we can, and then we'll get that information to staff when it's available.
Further from the board, Supervisor Simon?
No, I just, I just want to reiterate again, you know, we're always up here talking about all the projects that need to be done and going through community development and keeping them focused, and, you know, we talk about it all the time about adding an extra task on it. You know, if, if it doesn't take any staff time, that was the last conversation we had, you know, really like stay focused on moving forward with the Lower Lake plan and, and staying focused with that. Obviously, not trying to take the community out of it or anything, but I, I think your recommendation from Community Development is the way to move forward.
Anything further before I move on to public?
I don't have a pen, I think from the last meeting. Yeah, there we go. They took it. I know Upper Lake is pretty, I know they're, they're far down on, you know, on the priority list because of the date, but I know that they're ready to work on theirs. They've been calling, the chair has been calling and talking about, they're starting to plan meetings so that they could do the same thing that Cobb's doing and getting theirs prepared for when their time comes. So I'm, I'm on board with, with the initiative here and with, with your recommendation as well. And I know that they'll be working on theirs, you know, so that hopefully, when it gets to them, it's, it's just a couple of things instead of a, a long process, if that makes sense. We'll see.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just have a last question and I know that I'm confusing things between the general plan and the area plan, but are fire, safety and, for instance, I just got a, when I was looking through the CPUC, they're giving out pilot grants for electric vehicle charge stations, like are some of those things potentially embedded in the area plans, like energy efficiencies? Just to make sure that we're also updating what tourists are looking for in the area plan? Because I don't think those, that's not a zoning thing, that's more of an amenity type of thing in an area. Are those types of things going to be involved since we're moving from a 1980 plan to a new 2020 hopefully plan?
Absolutely. That can be, that can be elements included within the area plan.
And do we, do we have, will it be brought to us prior to the work being done so that we're making sure that all the elements that are involved are there or do we get to review it and add elements? How do we, how do we check in and make sure that we're getting a 2020 result rather than something that, because we have, the area plan is meant for the future. It's not meant necessarily for the present. And so I just, I'm interested in knowing what facets will be looked at.
During the area plan process, it'd be the committee members that provide input as to what is to be included within it. It's not presented to the planning commission or the board until it's completed.
Anything further before we open up to public? Is there any public comment on this item? You could please state your name and then you have three minutes.
John Moss, Citizen. I think the SEQA consultant is an extremely good idea and it will save the county from future liabilities. Thank you.
Jessica Pisca with Colberry Council. So I just want to let you know that we're going to continue our volunteer work and spend the next 18 months through our grant, working on our economic stimulus plan so we'll be ready when you're ready.
I appreciate the bureaucracy and all the complications of all the, the features of general planning and SEQA compliance and all that kind of stuff, but I'd like to bring this back to the idea that number one, it is a recommendation. That's all it is. And number two, that we have very bad problems with these area plans. The one that's best operated and managed is the Middletown area plan because it has a very active and participatory municipal advisory council with knowledgeable people, business people, all kinds of public members and so forth. Cobb has emulated that manifestation and their planning process is community-based and as, as I was said, they have volunteers that are very knowledgeable and skilled. The, the concerns I have, of course, are vested interests of mine, Upper Lake Nice, Lucerne, Glenhaven, Clear Lake Oaks and Spring Valley. I would like to see a simplified process where the board simply agrees to allow the municipal advisory councils to make some immediate recommendations. And the first thing I would like you to do is simply amend the shoreline area plan to remove the city of Clear Lake. It's not even a community development boundary in our general plan. They have their own responsibilities in their own general plan. So I don't know how that got hodgepodge together, but let's not waste time dealing with that. Just have the city say sure.
Let me ask, let me ask a question. So the North Shore?
The shoreline area plan is everything from Blue Lakes and the city of Clear Lake. Why that happened?
That's the one that was done with the North Shore when we did Upper Lake and all that?
The Upper Lake Nice area plan is separate.
Yeah.
And then the Lucerne, Glenhaven, Clear Lake Oaks, so all that kind of stuff.
Do you know when that was done? I just wonder if, the reason I'm asking, I'm wondering if it was done before the incorporation?
I think it was.
It was after?
Oh, it was way after. I think it was only just in the last.
It's been the 90s or something.
Ten years.
No, it wasn't in the last 10 years.
It's been done during my employment with the county.
The area plan?
After 2007, yeah.
Yeah. Middletown was the last area plan that we did.
Shoreline area plan was a very recent document.
Middletown was the last area plan that we did.
2009.
So we could simplify half of that.
Yeah.
And then we have the three municipal advisory councils. We could be advised by this wonderful team of people that are helping the Cobb area people. That's Elliot Herwitz, of course, the retired planner from the Napa County, senior planner. We know how they developed their resolution to create their council, which included a list of priorities such as their recovery plan, their, updated their area plan and so forth. Those of us who are active in the communities, and of course you know I'm a manager of that senior center, I am a participant in the Fire Safe Council, there are significant priorities that we would like to have addressed immediately, such as the implementation of the Community Wildfire Prevention Plan in each of these communities, supporting getting grants from their Risk Reduction Authority, you know, obtaining CalOES grants for fuel load reduction and vegetative cleanup. The Clean Water Program now is looking at additional authorities and requirements for compliance with a new trash reduction element. And that authority is going to allow us to make major dents on cleaning up some of these neighborhoods. So these are all beneficial things that we could put together. We don't have to do all, you know, we don't have to take all of that nice complicated SEQA integration zoning stuff.
If you could wrap it up for me.
I'm sorry?
If you could wrap it up because you're past your three minutes. I gave you a little bit more time because of our asking questions.
Sure, sure, but you get my drift.
Yes.
Okay? The other thing I would like to say is the Upper Lake Nice area plan has, has a conflated idea. It was based on, the development of Upper Lake is a tourist destination. It's an ag-based community. The one other problem is your Lakeport area plan, which does not even reflect any content or data about the population impacts of the city of Lakeport.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing no movement, I'll bring you back to the board. Supervisor Brown?
Well, I think we stick with the recommendation. We just focus on one. I'm, I'm okay with that because I think we have qualified people that can be doing other things in our district, like, like Jessica said, Colberry Council, North Shore. Everybody's got people that are involved in their communities that know, they know best what, what they want in their community better than, than we do as a government body. We know what we want in our community as community members, but, you know, staff, you know, does staff stuff. That's what they do. And, you know, to be actually embedded in the community, we'll leave that to the community members to really weigh in on that. I think they can do that with or without us and then they can bring that information to us. I, it's, it's a problem and I get it. Lower Lake is the oldest, but, you know, it's like if Scott were here and we were talking about roads, do we fix the roads that have already gone to dirt or do we fix the one that we can still salvage that's fairly recent? There's, there's an argument both ways and I think we're in that same analogy right here. Do we, do we wait and, and fix one that's going to be outdated by the time we get it done or do we amend and adjust something to make it more modern, something that we've done more recently? I think we can do, we could do both, but, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to figure out what staff has going on up there. You know, it's, things take a long time up there on a good day, you know, because of policies and, and things that, that need to be done, I guess. So I think this is just one more, like Mokes said, this is one more burden on them that, you know, may, may slow things down even more. I don't know.
The day that our community development is not feeling burden is the day we're not doing what we should be doing. They should have always more work than they should be able to handle.
Well, I get, I get that.
That's a positive problem.
Having more work and making more work are two different things.
I agree.
So.
I agree.
Well, for myself, I, I like the staff, staff's recommendation and I think we need to stay focused on, on one area. I know it says here, provide direction, but I would like to see it in a motion if that's okay, Anita? Can you do that?
I have a question.
Supervisor Sabatier. Hold on, let Anita.
Yeah.
You can give staff direction by motion or consensus on this particular item.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So I'm just going to ask a blunt question. Is there a hesitance from CDD to have community-led area plan workshops?
I think the, our main concern and focus would be ensuring that the area plans are consistent with the general plan, all county codes, the zoning ordinance, everything that's already been adopted and approved by the board supervisors. So that would, that would be the only thing is their general plan policy is specific to zoning and general plan land use designations, that certain general plan land use designations can only be located in certain areas that have proper infrastructure.
But, okay.
And so I just want to finish that with, but that.
It's not always the case.
So I, I appreciate the answer and I don't disagree with your concern, however, what, what it sounds like is, here's an area plan, let me give you a small box to fit that area plan in versus what do you want your community to look like 10, 15 years from now and kind of really allowing them to be creative with really where do they want to lead their community in the future? Because I believe and I know there's some hardships that come along with that, we can amend the general plan, we can amend a zoning ordinance. And again, it comes with certain hardships in order to get those things accomplished. But if we truly want to give the community the ability to provide input and really provide guidance for where that community will be 10, 15 years from now, which is how long those plans should last, then maybe that's a, a different way of really allowing the community to take hold of their own communities versus we're going to tell you what your community's going to look like and try to figure out how to make it work for what your dreams and hopes are for this community within these boundaries that we're going to set for you. And I could be wrong in what I'm saying, but that's, that's how I'm, I'm hearing it and feeling it.
So in that case, if they wanted to have, say, certain land use designations that would be in conflict with the general plan, then I would say we would have to put the area plan on hold and the general plan would need to be amended because the area plan needs to be consistent with the general plan.
It could be done simultaneously though, couldn't it?
Could.
Yeah.
There'd be a whole nother cost associated with that as well.
Yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I think, you know, I definitely appreciate all of our advisory councils, you know, and taking their consideration, but I know, you know, my thought on this is staying focused and getting it completed with one at a time, I think gives us an opportunity to move on. Hopefully what will happen is as we move through the process, the more updated ones, there'll be less changes and opportunities that need to be done there. So hopefully it will speed up as we get going. My thought on the whole process, we need to get started, we need to stay focused and get one completed, get it going and move from there. And as far as telling our communities what we're going to provide them, that's not how the process works. The community puts in all of their, you know, information on this, what we'd like to see in coordination with staff, we put it together and, you know, the communities are really developing these things. It's going to take a long time, obviously, but they ultimately are the ones who will have the, the final say on what's happening. And we've witnessed it right here in this room, projects that want to come into certain areas, our community shows up and says, hey, either we're in favor of it or not, even if it isn't done perfectly in the plans, our community shows up. So I know they'll be involved. We have plenty of professionals in each industry to sit at the table and help us move this thing forward. I just really think staying focused on the one is the best way to start.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I'm, I'm glad we're having the discussion. I'm, I agree, we'll start the one, but I still think we need to have this discussion. And I see what Michael is talking about with, you know, you know, we have to, we have to design our area plan based on the policies and procedures that we have. And that's, that's the naive that, that I had as a young board member, you know, coming up, is that, oh, that's the way it is, without realizing, well, guess what? We could also change these policies and procedures in order to accommodate our community. The way it's set up right now, the way planning and development and all that stuff is set up right now is that you have to be a big time, rich developer in order to develop in Lake County. So the poor guy can't do it. The guy that's just trying to, you know, trying to get by and, and, you know, have a small development can't do it because you've got all these hoops and hurdles and nonsense to jump through that are discretionary. You know, they're, they're discretionary to the extent that we can change them. It's not all state law that, that's driving all this stuff. It's stuff that's been done through the years by planners way before these folks that came through and, and quite frankly, put policies in place that were designed to stop development. That's what it looks like. And so I think we need to review those at the same time because the communities have to be able to have more, more say about what they want in their area. Just, and I'm not going to, you know, go into a lot of, you know, detail on specific properties, but just an example up on Cobb, there's a huge property up there, just like Michael said, the property, you have to have, you know, the, the use of it has to be designed to have particular infrastructure there. Well, it was planned that way back in, when was Cobb done? 89?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's no infrastructure there for this project, for a medical facility, for doctors' offices and all this stuff up on Cobb, up on Harrington Flat Road, and that's what it was designed for. There's never going to be infrastructure up there for that, but you can't build anything else here because that's what it says. That's what it was done back in 1989. So that's just an example of a lot of properties around our county that are basically useless for any reasonable development because we put these unreasonable requirements on in years past. So we need to look at those as well.
Supervisor Crandall.
I have, you know, I've noticed that we've, I've sat meetings with Michael and Byron and there's always the folks that are talking to us about either development or an ordinance or something of that nature. And they feel like the group is trying to not let them either progress or something like that and I, I just, I know that it's all legacy policies and now that you've said that, Rob, it makes absolute sense. And it also like raises another checkmark for me because I remember Byron would say, "Talk to the board because they could change that, they could fix that." And, and so I, I am saying this so that the public hears that this is things that's been inherited and we can fix it and hopefully that's where we're headed with this. So I just wanted to highlight that and let you guys know, I've been knowing this because I've been meeting with you and I understand and that's why I always try to interface with the problem situations that come up and when we meet.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Sorry, I've never been through an area plan. I've been through a general plan, so I, I'm just going to keep asking questions here until I, I get a, a better understanding. So I heard Supervisor Simon saying that the, the public really has their full say on what it is that they want. When you see that the public is asking for something that goes against what the zoning ordinance says of the general plan, do you at this point look at amending the general plan and the zoning ordinance or do you say this is not going to be possible or what, how does that continue from there on to give the community true abilities to, to mold the future of that community?
I would have to go before the board supervisors and seek direction to start an amendment of the general plan policy process. Just, just to give you an example, R1 land use, single-family land use, there are rules and requirements about the size of the lot depending upon the infrastructure. And when I'm talking about infrastructure, I'm talking about sewer, water, septic well. So if the lot doesn't have access to sewer and water, it needs to be much larger. And it actually, and then also it has to be located within a community growth boundary. So only certain land use designations can be requested if there is sewer and water.
And so you also said that maybe then i- if that's what we want to do is really open it up versus trying to look at what's the boundaries that we have that the general plan changes would come first prior to the area plan. Did I hear that correctly?
Well, the general plan policy, yes, because the general plan is the guiding document. The area plan, as mentioned, is a recommendation, however, as part of the area plan process, mapping updates come out of that. So in the area plan process, you say, well, I want zoning, I want property be zoned this way in this area, but it has to be consistent with the general plan. So if they're asking for something that's not consistent with the general plan and they absolutely want to move forward, the only way it can is if I go before the board supervisors and say, okay, this is what the, the committee is reporting on. Do we want to start an amendment to the general plan process? That's the only way it can happen.
Because now I'm curious, for instance, what Supervisor Brown is already doing with his community on Cobb, to, that would bring to you before the start of an area plan, these are the changes that we're going to be looking at, what, what policies need to change, what zoning needs to change, what general plan needs to change before we start the true project of doing the area plan. So I see that the, the town halls, municipal authorities have the ability to set up a better process for the area plan if you know, well, this is what major changes will need to occur in order for us to be able to meet this.
Potentially, but until we got through the process, I mean, that could vary. It could change until we actually went through the area plan process.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if we can shorten the timelines or any.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I think staff always honors the wishes of the board. If we want it changed and we express that, then that's what we should, that's what we should do. It's not, they're not going to bring stuff to us that they think we might want. I think if, if, if we could just make it simple as whatever the community is, they decide what they want, what's best for their community, where they want to. decide what they want, what's best for their community, where they want to grow, where they want housing infrastructure or housing inventory, you know, whatever. And then we give staff the direction or, or the guidance to say, you can't do that this way, but here's a way we can do it. That's, it's as simple as that. If it's possible to do, if it's something that we have discretion to change or bring back to us as a recommendation on behalf of the community, then that's what staff should be doing. And I think that's, you know, that's kind of generic, but I think it's, it shows the public that we're open to even looking at what, what it is they want for their specific community.
And I'm not fighting the fact that we don't have the ability to make those changes, I'm just trying to figure out if there's any way to make the process be more efficient because we do have some old area plans and each one at a time, rather than trying to make it more efficient, by the time we get done with two, the others will already be past their, their timeline. If it takes two to four years each.
Right. No, you're right, they will. The other, the other question that I want to ask, we, can we do three general plan amendments a year, is that, or two, four? Four, yeah.
Four, but that also includes projects that we are processing, so we process rezone and general plan.
You can put them all in together to do.
If the timing is right, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for their answers.
Anything further then?
I think we have the right direction.
Okay.
Thank you for your recommendation.
Do we want to put this, our direction into a motion or is stuff?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the community developments recommendation moving forward with the area plan.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a representative here for Scott DeLeon? How about the sheriff? Sheriff, are you here for this 7.10 item? I was going to take those up because I know they'd be fast before I go on to the longer ones.
710?
7.10?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and do that because I know that'll be fast, the other ones are, all right, 7.10, consideration of A, purchase of four fully equipped 2020 Ford Transit 150 PTV jail transport vans from Redwood Ford from the sheriff's pursuit vehicle replacement budget unit 2217, object code 62.72, and B, authorize the sheriff's owner or is designated to issue a purchase order to Redwood Ford in the amount of $258,176. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board and county administrative staff. My name is Lieutenant Rich Ward, I'm currently filling as the interim jail commander for the sheriff's office, my captain Taylor is at an extended training through the rest of the year. As you said, what you have before you today is consideration of purchase of, excuse me, four fully equipped 2020 PTV or prisoner transport vans from Redwood Ford in the amount of $258,176. I do have information on our current fleet as well as information pertaining to why we chose these vans, so I'll open this up for questions for the board at this time.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just mention the conversation I had with Sheriff Martin, I was at a department head meeting with Supervisor Simon. They talked about using Enterprise for looking at leasing or purchasing cars at a lower price. There was a mention during that meeting that not all vehicles that they would need are available through that, and so I checked with Sheriff Martin, this is one of those vehicles that are not available through Enterprise, and so that got my question answered right there and then, and so I, I'm ready to move on.
Supervisor Brown, did you have a question on this or no?
Nope.
All right. Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay, see no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
You know, I just want to state something only for the public, public's knowledge, I'm, I'm for this, I just, it's budgeted and because there was an incident over the weekend that had to do with something, and they're asking about purchasing of vehicles in the county, and I had to explain to them, these are budgeted items, they're, they need to be updated and there's, there's needs here. So, it's not just, you know, a cost coming from a general fund or anything, it's, it's budgeted item, and so, just.
And at this point, we do have a policy on cap of mileage and, and the memorandum, it didn't explain that they had reached their cap, so.
Right. So, I'm just doing that for reference.
Yeah, and it's, it is a replacement budget, I mean, it's, for every mile, you have to put money into this to replace it, so that's what we do.
Right.
Replace vehicles.
Right.
So, I need two motions.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to purchase of four fully equipped 2020 Ford Transit 150 PTV jail transport vans from Redwood Ford from the sheriff's pursuit vehicle replacement budget unit 2217, object code 62.72.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, the sheriff's coroner, coroner is designated to issue a purchase order to Redwood Ford in the amount of $258,176.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was an RCRC second.
Chair, sorry. So, I spoke with county council about this issue because I, I know you know about it and I know about it, but, and I know Bruno's been told part of it, but the other board members don't. And so, to, to just shut down, you know, public input, no matter, regardless of how crazy it is, I think the other board members should decide for themselves whether or not it's in their purview, so I'm asking that you open public input up and let the crazy train begin.
Okay. Do I need a motion then to open public input up again? So, I have a motion. You're going to be the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're opening public input back up again. Joan Moss.
I would suggest that your board ask the public speaker the topics to be discussed and then your board can, can determine if it's within your jurisdiction.
Okay.
Specific topics.
Specific topics, Joan, if you could tell us and then we'll determine if we're going to allow it.
Yes. I received an important news tip, and I need to ask Supervisor Brown if he is secretly married and living in Hidden Valley.
Questions are not public comment, it's not an interview item, this is only for, if there's a comment to be made by the public, again, it's within your board's purview to determine if it lies within your discretion to hear.
So, that's one topic.
And number two, I had another question.
Okay, so we can't answer a question, but what's the topic?
And I'm not sure why you're asking that, but if you're, if it's because you're wondering if I'm available, I'm not, so just, just let you know that.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said.
It's okay, go ahead. So, your, your second topic.
The second topic is, I received this missive, this news tip, and I consider it a whistleblower comment, and I sent it on to the state of California, the state controller.
Okay.
And the third topic is I believe that we need to hear about garbage on Robert Brown's property. Thank you.
I think the garbage would be under our, but not the rest of it. I don't, do we have an agreeance to that?
You think that having somebody illegally dump garbage on my property is your business?
Well, no, but it's.
Pretty sure it's not.
It'd be community development.
No, it's not their business either. I dealt with it.
I think the speaker was merely suggesting that that was a topic for your board to consider taking up at another time.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Is that correct? Yes, so I think that's concluded it.
So, do we want to hear anything further?
I didn't hear that, but.
No?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you very.
Thank you, Joan.
Oh, God, you're welcome.
Okay. Back to the agenda, we are going to go to our 7.9 item. Oh, hold on.
We opened up public comment.
This is public comment time?
Sure, we're going to need you to fill out a request form, but what's your public comment, what's the topic?
Or is there going to be public input at the end? I'm from Anderson Springs, Ann Prane, and we have people wanting to go to the PUC meeting on Thursday, and I, that's coming up, right?
That's coming up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
7.9. Consideration of change order number one for three SB1 rehabilitation improvement projects, bid number 19-10 for a decrease of $5,334.02 and a revised contract amount of $560,718.23. Scott?
Good morning, Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. This is a change order, balancing change order for a project that we just completed. We did some infield modifications to some of the bid items and resulted in a decrease of $5,334.02. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them, but the project's complete and it's a project that was funded through our SB1 revenues and was the repair of some much-needed areas in, in this end of the county.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate this coming to us, I always love the decreases, those are the good ones. I know that every year there will be a new slate of projects for SB1. I know that I've received some questions about SB1, not only the funding, has it been diverted away because of what our California legislature and governor have been doing, and so I'm wondering if in the future, when you're prepared with the new slate of projects to come to us, that you can maybe show some before and after pictures of these projects that have been done this year, talk about how SB1 is working for us, and then show us the, what possible projects as well.
So, what I typically do is when we do the notice of completion for these projects, I'll bring some slides with those, those photos that you request. This is the, so, some work we need to do prior to that notice of completion, so you will get those photos on when we bring in the notice of completion.
Nice, nice. Because I know there's lots of questions out there and you had some good answers, and I want to make sure everybody's hearing it.
Okay, any further questions? Any comments from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve change order number one for three SB1 rehabilitation improvement projects, bid number 1910 for a decrease of $5,334.02 and a revised contract amount of $560,718.23.
Second.
Supervisor Simon?
I apologize for whoever's district that was.
Did you have, did you have any questions on that because I saw your?
Second.
All right, I have a motion as second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we wish to take a break before we take up our 7.7 item or just continue pushing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a break.
A break, okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we're going to come back with our 7.7 item. Okay, we're back in session, we're going to take up our 7.7 item, consideration of resolution, amending resolution number 2019-70, adopting a policy for the collection of taxes due pursuant to the Lake County Cannabis cultivation tax ordinance. Anita?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, again, kind of a initial precatory presentation to initiate a discussion. Supervisor Sabatier had initiated a request to have this discussion begin, and the, the form of this is simply just to kind of confine the discussion within a vehicle where these changes can be made. We have had brief discussions, in fact, the initial meeting did involve the tax coordinator. We have not had any discussions with community development as yet, given, again, this is an initial, initial offering to prompt discussion and for Supervisor Sabatier to offer his viewpoints and rationale and what he'd like to see for your board's consideration.
Okay, so, so I guess we'll start with Supervisor Sabatier.
So, there were a couple of things that were brought to my attention, and I think taxes is always a delicate subject, we want to make sure that we treat them properly and treat those who are paying them properly as well. One was that now people are, we have a few different use permits in the, in process. One of them I'm aware of intimately because it, I've had to meet with the city of Clearlake about it because it's on the outskirts of the city of Clearlake, and that's for 15 acres of canopy. Another one that I'm aware of is for 25 acres of canopy, and there's more and more coming down the pike. And some of these, some of these folks are looking at phasing in their development rather than doing all full-blown what the use permit allows them to do, and they are requesting, which I think is rightfully so, if I'm only doing five acres this year and then 10 acres this year and then 15 acres overall in the long term, why am I paying 15 acres worth of taxes if I'm not growing 15 acres? And so, there was a, a request for that to be looked at to see, is there possible to ask for a decrease? Then there's some who chose not to grow because either A, they didn't have a state license, or they had other issues, I know one of the other issues that was brought up, which we resolved, was that they didn't have access to ag exempt, for instance, like dry sheds, and they were worried to breaking rules by putting up a building that they didn't have the approval to build, and so they decided to opt out and not grow, but they were still submitted a bill to pay for their taxes for something that they had not, they had no activity on. And so, this is brought to the board today with one in front of you on the ordinance or on the resolution, it states that there is the ability to opt out. But I would also like to add something else, which is, we should only tax what we should tax. And, and, and it's kind of strange because we've created a, it's, it's not an impossible process, obviously, we have many permits that have been put out there, but it's definitely a lengthy process, it requires a lot of steps to get through it, and it's not the same simple process as just doing ag, which I'm not trying to change that. But at the same time, we have this lengthy process, but then now we're forcing them to do the maximum of what they should. And I don't think government should be in the business of telling businesses what they should do, we should only tax them on what they are doing. It doesn't make sense to me to say, no, you got a permit for 15 acres, you will pay for 15 acres worth of taxes. If somebody chooses to do less, then you should only tax them for what they did, because taxes should not be placed on anything that is not done. That's like a, a good analogy that I had in a conversations I had yesterday was, when we do housing developments, oftentimes we do them in phases, we don't pay, make them pay for property taxes for things they have not yet built. Same thing should be for cannabis, if you are growing less, then you should pay less, you shouldn't pay just what your permit is for, because now we're taxing you on something you're not doing. And when it comes to taxes, we need to be careful, I think we open ourselves to potential litigation when we're taxing on something that's not being actually done. And I think, and this is the new conversation that will come to Director Delval, there is an annual inspection process that occurs every single year annually, and I think in that inspection process, we should constantly be looking to make sure that what is the actual square footage of it? What are we taxing them on? Number one, we shouldn't tax people on more than we should, and number two, we should make sure they're not growing more than they've been allowed to grow. And if we don't measure, then we don't know if they're staying within the confines of the use permit, or if we're taxing them too much, which I think puts us in a bad negative situation.
Okay.
That's the gist of it.
Supervisor Brown?
I think, I appreciate your analogy, I read this after I talked to you yesterday, or actually, if you asked me if I had a chance to read it, I read it after that, and I appreciate that, and I think regardless of the business, we have to be consistent, and I, I totally agree with you. It's, your analogy is perfect, and I, I think you're right on, right on the mark with that.
Anything further from the board before open to public? Any public comment or questions on this item?
I would like to ask Michaelin, yes.
Come and sit with us, Michaelin.
And, and actually, before you talk, if I may go one step further, when identifying the taxes that have been paid for cannabis, there seems to be some partial payments. And so, I know that there's been some internal conversations, but I want to bring them publicly and bring them to the board to make sure we're all aware. I believe the intent of the public in voting for Measure C, that if somebody grows cannabis, whatever, one square foot or 10,000 square feet, that they're supposed to pay a dollar per square foot outdoors, $2 hybrid, $3 indoor, right? We, in some instances, have prorated because they got their permit in May or they started planting in May and prorated so that they didn't pay the full dollar per square foot, but because they're looking at the year, they prorated it so they only paid from May to December or something of the kind. Maybe I'm not understanding it 100%, but I believe that's the way it goes. In my opinion, we're not supposed to prorate, we're supposed to do a dollar a square foot, no matter if you grow in May, in June, in April, in March, whatever you decided to start, we voted on a dollar a square foot. There is, it's about a harvest season and a cultivation season, it's not about dates in the calendar. And so, I, I think we need to get our full amount of taxes if we have not been collecting our full amount of taxes. And in my opinion, it should be based on a fiscal calendar and not a calendar. it should be based on a fiscal calendar and not a calendar calendar, because we shouldn't be asking somebody to pay taxes in January for something they have not yet planted. We should ask them to pay for something they planted after July 1st, which would be the new fiscal year, which they would have planted by then. We would know also what the square footage is, based on inspections. And then we can send them that second bill, because in the taxes says it's a biannual bill. We can send them that second bill after January, where they would have already harvested, and their season is over as well. I think it makes more sense, seems more fair to do it this way. But I want to make sure we're getting our full amount, maximum, off of these taxes. I also want to make sure we're asking what we should be asking for.
Miclin Delval, Community Development Director. Okay, so hopefully I can keep my thoughts organized. First thing, I just want to talk about early activation. If somebody comes in and they're asking for early activation, and they qualify, we only charge them based on what they're telling us they're going to grow, not the full amount that they've applied for currently. So that has been the practice for quite some time. Concerning phasing, absolutely. If an applicant comes in and says they want to phase their cultivation, absolutely, we would be open to incorporating that into their use permit now. I, no, I'm not against that at all. Concerning the timing and payment, so right now, we're asking each applicant, per your guys' direction previously during the prior meetings, when they're going to be starting their cultivation. And so they tell us, that's one of the requirements, is part of their application. They tell us when they're going to be starting their cultivation, and then when that time comes, and that's when we prepare their tax bill. And they have 30 days to pay it. And they are charged the dollar per square foot. It's because of the timing of the tax collector. And when the tax collector prepares the bills, is the timing of which, where we say, okay, depending upon when they told us they're going to start cultivation, and that's when we prepare the bill, from that date through whatever the date the tax collector has identified as our deadline, because they will pick it up after that time period. So they're not being charged a reduced rate. It is the, whatever it is, whether it be a dollar, $2, depending upon what kind of cultivation. Now, this is outdoor cultivation. Indoor cultivation, we don't tax them until their building permit, until they're actually able to cultivate within the structure, if they're asking for indoor cultivation. Did I answer all the questions? Did I miss anything?
I'm just going to look up to see if I could find my original Excel spreadsheet to see where my confusion with the prorated.
So when you go out and you do the inspections, are you measuring?
Absolutely not. That is impossible for staff to do. What would realistically occur is, we give the conditions to the applicant, and we say, applicant, you indicate to us how you've met all of these conditions. And if they ended up, if they prior, when they tell us they're going to start cultivation, and we'll be giving them the tax bill, if it ended up being something different, they ended up growing less than what they paid, then I believe that the procedure was established that they would go through the tax collector's office for a refund. I thought that that was already established.
But you can clearly see when you go out between five acres and 10 acres. So if they say they're growing five, and you go out there, it's easily being able to see, right?
We would be able to see that they're growing. Would we be able to tell exactly how much they're growing? Unlikely.
Supervisor Brown?
So I'm just trying to think of a system that we already have in place, that, you know, like if somebody builds a house, you know, they submit a set of plans, this is the size of the house. This is what they pay for. At some point, the building inspector's out there doing inspection, and they throw a tape on it, see, right? They're supposed to.
Do they throw a tape on the entire structure? No. The chief building official probably could comment better on that process, but they would be...
But they verify that there's a house there.
Verify that they're actually constructing per the plans. Yes. And they check setbacks during their first initial inspections.
So, I mean, couldn't there be a process in place where you do that same thing, where you tax them on the size to grow they anticipate?
Their site plan, which they give us as part of their application.
Okay, so that's what you're doing, they're doing. And then if they decide to go less, then they can come back in. They don't, because if you're, you have to resubmit if you're going to, like, I'm just using the house analogy again. If you make it smaller or make it bigger, you have to come in and resubmit an amended plan.
Correct. We wouldn't need an actual, an actual site plan.
Yeah, and the fee is then either refunded, or you have to pay more to you, not, it doesn't go through the tax assessor.
We don't, we do not collect the fees. That's entirely through the tax collector's office.
Okay, that's where I'm lost then. I thought that they came, I thought we had talked about you guys collecting the fee for that. Okay, I got you.
No, we just prepare the coupon because of...
That makes sense, what you're saying now, I see, yeah.
Originally, we had spoke about where we could give the tax collector a copy of the conditions, and they could just take the square footages off the conditions, but that procedure, that process was not established. It was decided that the Community Development Department would prepare the tax coupon and give that to the applicant. That's as far as we go with the process.
Got it.
They take that tax coupon down to the tax collector's office, the tax collector accepts the fees, and any other disputes later on down the line are completely dealt with through the tax collector's office.
And just wanted to follow up real quick, if you don't mind. So I have the Excel, one of the original Excel spreadsheets I have, and this was for fiscal year 1819. I see one that was 22,500 cultivation square feet at a tax rate of 1, meaning it's outdoor, and the total tax was 9,678. Times 2 would be about 1,900 instead of 22,500. Another one I have in front of me was 14,486 square feet, again, a tax rate of 1 for being outdoor, and the total tax here says $2,103.45. Keeps going. One is a mixed lay, which is a double of 17,000 square feet, which should be about 34,000. Total tax was 4,966. And I know that I've had some conversations with Mr. Sullivan about prorated, and I believe that it happened at least once, or a few times, I'm assuming, because this is not something that I don't think I misunderstand, especially with the data that I have in front of me as well. Maybe it's been fixed and solved. Hopefully it has, but I want to make sure we capture every dollar when it comes to this.
I was going to suggest, for the purposes of this discussion, that we invite Ms. Martinez up from the tax collector's office, because she can speak to this as well.
Why don't you come sit with us?
So I believe that, if I'm correct, proration goes back to the beginning of this implementation of the ordinance, and that it was regarding the, it would stem from the ability to tax lawfully cultivated cannabis, that once the permit was issued, that's what was being looked at. So they're still, for every day that they're operating, since that permit's issued, they're being charged the tax, but not going back to the beginning, if that was right.
No, originally, that was the procedure, and then we would charge them the day that we issued the use permit, and it was prorated, depending upon what day, because of the timing. Liz can talk more about the timing of the tax collector and the reason why we have to prepare these coupons this way. But then there was an item before your board, and your board decided that you didn't want us preparing the tax coupon until they're actually cultivating, per your direction. So then we changed our process.
Okay, so the process has been resolved.
There's still proration. It's still a dollar, it's still a dollar, the fee's still the same. So the only process that changed is, rather than giving them a tax coupon per when we issue the use permit, and they may not have been cultivating for five months, six months, to when your board directed us, you said, no, we do not want you charging them until they're actually cultivating, so we changed that procedure. That's the only thing that's changed, is the dates.
And that's due to the Measure C tax, saying taxes will accrue upon legal cultivation with the definition meaning seed planted in the ground.
Correct.
Gotcha.
As far as the timing, the reason that you're seeing that difference, or you're not seeing, you know, like you're saying, like if it's 60,000 square feet, and then you're seeing 60,000, is because we don't start billing them until they start cultivating. And then once we pick them up in the annual cycle, then you'll see that if it's 60,000 for outdoor, they're going to be billed 60,000, and those two installments of 30,000 each.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that, again, we're capturing every dollar, and that we're also not taxing for something that's not there. You said, Director Delval, you said that you do not measure out there. So we're going with good faith that what they asked for is what they're doing? Is that how?
Correct. You know, some of these grows are four acres, or larger. We wouldn't have a measuring tape that large. Or it could take it, it could be like an all-day thing.
It's, you could just do a wheel walk, just a wheel.
Yeah, I don't know how long it would take to walk before it'd be four acres.
About 20 minutes. It's not, it's not that far.
And I agree.
It's only 45,000 square feet is an acre, so it's not, it's not that big.
And I agree, we are growing in the, no pun intended, in the amount of acreage that is being requested on your use permits that you're receiving right now. So that will add more. I didn't mention this, but in the resolution that's mentioned here, it says by June 1st, that you would have to submit your plan to say whether you're doing an opt-out, or whether you're doing a reduction, to let us know what your amount is. If you can comment on that, if that works within what you're already dealing with, or if this goes against what you're, if this throws the wrench in your wheel.
So that was a discussion that Patrick and I had, because we wanted to make sure that it was a timing where the cultivation, where they knew for sure. So we figured that was a date. I mean, that's a date that could be changed, but I would assume that by that date, people would know whether they're going to cultivate or not. And then we could bill. Sorry about that. So that's a decision, the date that we decided on.
Okay.
Because we're, with us changing the billing cycle now, where we're billing the January through June in August, then by then, we would know, because we had to get the bills out the last week of July, to give them the 30 days to pay. So we decided on that date.
And just my last comment. Part of this is due to somebody right now asking to get a refund on something they paid, and they didn't have any activity, and they're saying, you can't tax me on no activity. This resolution is interpreting the intent of the board for Measure C, which is, in my opinion, not to tax people for not doing an activity. You tax people for doing an activity, you don't tax them for not doing an activity. So this, if approved as is, I'm just putting out there that the intent brought to us is to interpret that as from the beginning to now. Right now, we've been holding on to Measure C taxes just in case of this issue. I know I've been asking Carol a whole bunch, I've spoken to the board a whole bunch, maybe we can use cannabis tax for this, we can use cannabis tax for that. But I keep being told we want to hold off until we solve this problem before we start issuing money and putting it in certain baskets until this needs to be solved.
Supervisor Brown?
So the scenario that you gave is probably, it may be isolated, I don't know if there's several of them like that, where they're, somebody...
We can ask Patrick. I believe there's only one complaint right now on that.
Yeah, there's four separate licenses involved, or actually five, but it's from one distinct area. That all shares the same issue, with lacking a state license, and that's why they did not cultivate.
So I gave the building permit example earlier, and to stay with that, if somebody bought a building permit, and they went a whole year, whatever, without building, I don't think you get a refund on that.
But you don't pay property taxes on a building you didn't build?
So, no, that's true.
Because they pay for the fee for the use permit.
Okay, but is this, the fee that you're talking about, is that a property tax?
No, it's a cultivation tax, which was not cultivated.
Yeah, so it's not the same. It's a permit to cultivate, just like a permit to build.
No, the permit is there. They're not asking for a refund on the permit. They're asking a refund on their taxes that they paid, because they wanted to stay in good...
It is, it is different, yeah. I mean, it's, the analogy that I'm using is different enough to where it can't be. But it's not property taxes either, though, so they weren't assessed.
They were assessed a cultivation tax.
No, they weren't, I didn't, yeah, I wasn't finished with the sentence. Sometimes I do that. They weren't assessed a property tax valuation based on their cultivation project, so. So, well, how much money are they talking about?
I'd have to ask Mr. Sullivan.
Because there is, there is an appeal process, right?
So it's a little over $200,000 that is currently in contention from these licensees. Another important note would be, the reason they didn't have their state license for part of the season was due to bureaucratic issues with the State of California. The state was supposed to fix their licensing system. They actually were participating in the state process.
Are they, are they going to cultivate next year?
I believe that is their intent, but I haven't specifically spoken with them on that. They only brought up this season.
Could they do, could they be credited for that? Is that a possibility that we have in our process?
I would defer to Ms. Martinez on that. It is difficult with our software to track credits.
Correct. Currently, we don't have a process in place, but...
So they would need to be refunded. Who needs to make that decision?
Actually, at this time, the current licensees have not paid their bill yet. They did not pay. So there was a small refund given a few months ago on a different matter, but this group hasn't actually paid.
Yeah, we should definitely give them back everything they paid then.
Yeah, right now, that's not the issue. It's whether we would be forcing them to pay.
Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Could we make it the opt-out, where it can't go on more than a year? I mean, could that be something that we put into place, where you can't continue to opt out?
And...
Supervisor Sabatier?
I would disagree with that, just because if a business needs to shut their door because they have to take care of their family, because their family has cancer, if a grower is deciding that this is not going to work for us, we can't force them to the 10-year use permit. We can't force somebody into debt or into a situation that we should not have control over.
But their permit would no longer be valid, though, right? They'd have to come back in, would they have to come back in to resubmit for their permit if they...
If they don't use their use permit for two years, it expires.
It expires. So that's the expiration date there.
I got another question. Is, how much staff time goes into a situation like that, where, you know, sometimes you can reimburse up to a certain amount, depending upon how much staff time there is? So is that something that we consider? Of course, if there's no money that they pay, there's nothing that we're going to hold out, so it doesn't really matter, I guess, but...
And I do want to say that there's, we started this whole process years ago with concerns of how this was going to go, and for somebody to say, I didn't grow because I wasn't completely 100% legal, I think is the type of people that we should be happy that we're dealing with, rather than somebody who just decided, hey, I don't have something, but whatever. So I think that's, their good faith and honesty is something that we should definitely consider.
Patrick?
I think another point to this would be, by going through this process, if we are to offer an opt-out, that's why after talking with the tax collector's office, it'd be valuable to change our billing process to address the tax as a retrospective tax instead of prospective, because instead of charging people in advance, we'd be charging them after the fact. They would have already started cultivating. The risk of refunds or credits would be much smaller than now. And so then when we get that revenue in, there's a much higher degree of certainty to it. Right now, we're billing people in advance. We don't know what's going to happen. If someone, if we were to keep the same billing system and allow opt-outs, we would face a large number of credits. By moving that cycle forward, we bypass that. It would delay the next round of taxes paid coming in by a few months, but it would buy us a much higher degree of certainty.
Yeah, I agree to that. Any further thing from the board before we open up to public again? Is there any public comment on this item? You could please state your name, then you have three minutes.
John Moss, citizen. I'd like to know if there's a different category for self-use. If you're growing three plants for yourself to use, is that a different category? And do you still have to pay taxes and use a permit? Or can you just grow, I thought it was three plants or six plants, for your own use? Thank you. Because I hear different things about the law, and I don't really understand the law, so I thought I'd ask.
We're talking commercial use. We're not talking personal use.
So if you're using it just for your own use, it's different?
As long as you don't have more than six.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that for the listeners.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board.
So I just want to make a quick question. Right now, the ability to phase in or request to do less is a possibility. They just have to connect with you before June 1st in order to let you know prior to them planting?
If they want to do phasing, they need to let us know before it goes to the planning commission. So that's incorporated into their use permit.
And so, for instance, when I first started here, we got a crop report saying that vineyards, that there was more grapes, that was... that there was more grapes, that it was kind of a saturated market and that they made less. Some people might make some of those decisions, saying, "Oh, well, cannabis is now $20 a pound because it's oversaturated. I'm going to do less." Is that a possibility for them to make those changes and just bring it to you, to the CDD, in order to make those changes?
That would be a minor modification. There's a fee associated with that process, yes.
But at this, so there's a minor modification, but the, so in my mind, a permit is, this is the maximum that you're allowed to do. But now we have to go through this whole process of minor, even though we're doing less and the impact will be less, we still have to go through a use permit process in order for them to be taxed less?
So they let us know when they're going to start cultivation. If they want to do anything different than what they were approved, they would need to apply for a modification, because what if they're going to move it? They, we may need to conduct additional SEQA analysis. They may need to have another biological report done. They might have to have another archaeological report if they're moving things around. So we, so we always need a record of what it is that's been approved.
But if it's, if it's... If it's within the same footprint, they submit a modification, and therefore, it's already been approved on that footprint?
Then we would need another updated site plan. They, we still would need to, everything needs to be accurate at all times.
What does, what do vineyards have to do? If they choose to only do a quarter of their acreage, do they have to do something similar?
Vineyards are considered agricultural use, and it is a permitted use in the zoning districts, just like hemp, walnuts, pears. The only thing they have to do is go through a grading permit through our department, which can likely trigger SEQA.
Right, right. I wish there was an easier process to treat a plant like a plant. And of course, I get it. If it's in a new area, new site, absolutely get it. But to put hardship when you're trying to do less, which means less impact, just seems slightly ridiculous to me. But at this point, I think I'm getting 90% of what I'm looking for, and so I'm, I'm okay with it.
What is the length of that process, to be able to go back and...
A minor modification? If it's minor enough, I can approve it.
Okay, and then, so within just a couple of days, then?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, all right, so it's not, it's not a really lengthy process.
Depending on what the modification is.
Correct.
And what's the fees involved in that? Approximately, I mean, is it thousands or is it hundreds?
No, it's less than $1,000.
So they'd be saving a whole lot of money, tax revenue, coming back in and doing a minor...
Absolutely.
Can't wait till the federal government changes.
Any other questions? Do you have, this was just...
So I'm, I'm absolutely, absolutely going to offer the motion to amend Resolution Number 201970, adopting a policy for the collection of taxes pursuant to the Lake County Cannabis Cultivation Tax Ordinance.
Madam Chair, before you do that, may I just make note, please, that on page two, top middle of the page, there's a blank where it says Resolution Number, that should be Resolution Number 2019-70.
As amended.
Thank you.
So that was, this is a resolution, so the resolution's been offered?
Yes, that's what I meant to say.
Call roll?
As amended.
As amended. Call roll, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yep.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our 7.8 item, consideration of an ordinance amending specified sections of Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code relating to administrative fines for violations of County Code relating to the failure to obtain cannabis cultivation permits. And Anita?
Thank you. This is another item in working with Supervisor Sabatier and with Patrick Sullivan. And again, it's not something that has yet been put out to other interested departments, such as community development. What it attempts to do is to address a more heightened response for those individuals who fail to obtain any permits and thereby fail to, to pay any taxes, scuff laws, if you will, who are simply operating underneath the radar. As your board is aware, that creates an economic hardship for the county because it's a failure to accrue those taxes that everyone else is paying. It can afford great environmental damage. Your board has seen that up close and personal in many places. And it also is unfair to the many businesses that are operating pursuant to state licensure and county permits, and in that sense, creates an unfair business practice, which is also actionable at substantial fines under the Business and Professions Code. So again, this is truly a rough draft that would, I think, require a great deal more consultation with affected departments. Of course, that's completely up to your board. But this is just, again, a format to be able to initiate those discussions. As you'll see, it retains some of the penalties that were already in existence, but adds the additional fraud action, as well as the unfair business practices as a potential. And that also adds an additional penalty for per-plant, which is designed to deter people from large illegal grows, which create such huge impacts to the residents of, of Lake County.
Supervisor Sabatier, do you want to start?
So I wanted to bring this up because I'm, I'm kind of tired of our inability to really have the hammer against illegal grows. And illegal grows have a huge problem, not just due to fraud or unfair business practice, but just to our communities in general and our environment. And I'm, was really hoping that we can add the tax on them, but I know that's not a possibility. But I was looking for what kind of major impact can we do financially against those who are still behaving, are still bad actors in this industry? I really think that we need to enhance our abilities for code enforcement, potentially for our sheriff's office to really go after these grows. I know typically, our sheriff's office will be more likely to go after the large, large grows, maybe thousands of plants. But you, you can look at Google Earth, and you know what's going on in our, in our backyards. It's unfortunate how, grow your six, I'm happy with that. But as soon as I start seeing holes here and there, everywhere, in every community for 50 plants or more, it starts to really show the scars that are happening in our, in our county. And so I'm very happy to work with Ms. Grant. And she was really happy to find comparable ordinance for something similar in San Francisco. And so we, we were able to, she was able to put this together. And I, I am looking forward to see how much more teeth we can add to this. I think that the more we bother these people, the more we bug these people, the more we keep going. I do want to mention, unfortunately, I know that I spoke with Sheriff Martin yesterday. He's not able to be here because he's in El Dorado County right now for the memorial of the slain sheriff due to illegal grows. We need to get these illegal grows out of here. And we need to do our best to try and figure out a good ordinance that can get rid of these illegal grows. They, they are not only a danger to our residents, but also to our law enforcement and anyone else, code enforcement as well. And we need to figure out how to fight that.
Anything further from the board before I open up the public? I'm going to open up the public comment. Any comments or questions on this item? See no movement, then I'll bring it back to the board. I am in agreeance with you. I think we definitely need to have teeth involved in this. We have many great actors doing the right thing, trying to do the right thing to grow their cannabis, to be part of the community. And I think we need to be doing our part to try to take care of the black market and make it hurt a little bit with, with fines, if we're able to do that.
Yeah, I'm in agreement also. We, each one of our districts has been affected by illegal grows. Community members and other folks, you know, that send them in, obviously, we pass that information on to the proper authorities to go out there and make sure they're taken care of. But I know at least in District 1, there's been multiple non-compliant illegal grows out there. And whether or not they wanted to come into compliance eventually, you know, that's up to them. But at this point, we know that it's happening every day in all of our districts. So, yeah, I, I agree, coming up with some type of fines or things. We had this discussion when we were talking about the ordinance, and I know when to go as drastic as, you know, if you didn't, weren't in compliance, that you would never be able to grow in Lake County. But we didn't get to that point. But any fines or anything, that's what they understand, money and costs. That's the constant complaint, why they say they can't come into compliance. And that's why they're trying to do it. But we're constantly trying to move things, at least they need a little ways to help them out. We just did that a few minutes ago. And, yeah, I, I agree, we're moving in the right direction. We need to come up with something that helps protect all of our community and everybody out there doing, the sheriff's department, community development, and everybody who's affected by it. So that's my support.
Anything further?
I do want to add something. Something happened, sorry to put a negative light on your district. Something happened in District 3 the other day, which I think should absolutely be a part of this. And I don't know that it has enough specific detail of specificity, and that was the honey lab explosion. And here, it talks about plant counts. But I think that manufacturing is also a legal business that if you don't have a license for, and you're not doing it in the right zone, and if you're not doing it with the proper safety measures, that there should be some very harsh fines and fees and, and whatever measures we can put in here to make sure that that also gets nipped in the bud. Because we can't allow those kinds of explosions to happen. I had one about three blocks away from my house in Clear Lake. It sounded like the explosion was right next door. Burned down my friend's house right next door as well. It's just a dangerous situation, and we need to also have the teeth to be able to make sure that there's something that happens to these people. There actually was one that did not blow up in District 1 in Lower Lake. Those people need to have fines and, and harsh consequences for these types of activities because the potential of the explosion that can occur is huge, even in comparison to the grows that, that happen. It's, 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 it's just, it's a bad situation. So I want to make sure that every business license is covered by this, that if you're doing any kind of activity, not just cultivation, that you, even transportation, you need to have a license to be transporting cannabis. And so we need to make sure that every license has a way for us to have a very good, good teeth to make sure people stop.
Supervisor Brown?
So I appreciate what you're trying to do here, but you keep using the term, we need to put some teeth. Some teeth in this. But what you're talking about, there, most of it's already felonies. We just don't have the ability to enforce it. We don't have the staff. We don't have, you know, the harvest time, you know, they're, they're everywhere. The guy, the deputy and his help that's helping him out, they're trying to do it all at one time. The honey oil lab, I don't think we have a, have a permit for that at this point. And it's illegal. It's a felony. So, and you don't find out about them until after they've blown up. So I, I don't disagree with you. We need to do something, but I think we already have. We just need to be able to enforce that. Creating another, you know, county ordinance, I don't think it'll solve anything, you know? Not going to hurt anything. I get that, but don't, don't want anybody to be under the illusion that all of a sudden now we're going to take care of, you know, things like that. I had one in my district, too. Kid was killed in it. But it's already illegal. It's already a felony. So that's, that's the real issue, so.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't know it was a honey lab. I, when I went down there, because it's right down the road from my house, actually, when the explosion took place, we didn't know if it was that, a meth lab, or whatever. And so, but the community immediately wanted to talk to me about this in general happening. It's the third time in, in it having to do with labs in general and illegal activity. And so I think what makes it frustrating is that even if there is, there's no, there's, they feel like there's no recourse. And so with this, with this intact, it, it would help with having, I think, the image of one as well. But of course, we need the, we need to be able to hold them in a cell or hold them when they get charged. That's the other thing that they're having a problem with. It's kind of all correlated in the community with many different facets when it comes to code enforcement, with this, with this in general, with police. You know, it's all a very synergistic issue there, aside from just this. And so it's complicated for me when I talk with them, because they want answers, they want results. And then we're talking about this ordinance, and I, and I just, I want to do it because I know it helps to amend it. But I just, I just know that there's a lot more that's going to solve it in, in general. So I'm just making this statement, too, because like, immediately when things like this happen, I'm right there with these groups of people, talking about what we need to do, you know? So I'm glad you mentioned the, the explosion. I just didn't know the full details, so I didn't want to throw out, you know?
Supervisor Simon? Supervisor Brown?
I do have a follow-up on that, so...
Your microphone's back off again.
You keep flipping that thing off, is that what?
I didn't do that this time.
The reflex.
Yeah. Like ninja. The, just walk me through this, because you talked, talked about the honey oil lab and, you know, some of these grows, you know, these, this is, these guys are serious. They're not, they're not easy to get along with. What is your, what is your plan? Who, when you have an ordinance like this, who's going to enforce it, in your mind? And this isn't a trick question, I'm just trying to back, backplay it.
No, because it takes personnel, it takes staff time to be able to process any of these things.
You're talking code enforcement?
So I'm talking code enforcement. I'm talking potentially sheriffs, depending on what it is that they find. And I know that I will let Ms. Grant answer some of that question as well, because she offered some suggestions on who can process and can take on these charges.
Okay, and the reason I ask that, and I'll, I'll let, I need to answer, too, but it would, what I, what I want to get to is it's not a, it's not a board thing where we can say, "This is what we would like for you to do." This is some, these guys, I mean, I've been dealing with them for a long, long time. And this is not, what you, what you need to do is you have fish and game. You have code enforcement, you have the sheriff's department, and maybe even the police departments involved in this. What do you, what do, ask them, what do they need from us? What kind of ordinance do you need in place from us that will help you guys do your job? That's what I think, that's the direction I think we need to go.
And I'm not going to disagree on that.
I think it's the same thing you're asking for, but it's getting input from them. Because I think if we just sit up here and, you know, state things that we think are obvious as board members, it's just going to be another, you know, it's a, it's a symbolic ordinance that, that can't be enforced. Think if they come back and say, "This is in the DA's office," what are they going to prosecute? You know, I, you know, just dealing with this garbage thing. Everybody says, "Well, call the sheriff, call this, call that." There's nothing, there's, there's only so many things that they can do. You can't prosecute people for certain things. The DA's office, not because they're not doing their job, or not willing to do their job. There's certain things they're just looking at going, "Yeah, we'd love to be able to do it, but we can't." So we need to be able to create ordinances, because that's what we do. We don't make law up here. That's the state that does that, the feds. We do ordinances, and we need ordinances to support those laws in form of, you know, fines or whatever up here, and resources with, to provide. We have, there's a cost to it, a cost element to it. We can go back, and we can abate them, we can do all this kind of stuff. But that's what we need to do. It needs, they need to get together, come back and tell us what, this is what we need for you guys to do, so.
Can I address the supervisors on this topic?
Yes.
My name's David Cassian. I'm the chief building official for Lake County. Prior to coming to Lake County, I worked for Humboldt County as their code enforcement manager. And their process on how they were handling a lot of the illegal cannabis, they had a program called Planet, satellite program that they contracted to. I worked in, in, in sequence with GIS, where they were able to view properties and see real-time activity on those properties and target areas that where cannabis grows were going on. Through GIS, they were able to take and pull up the API, and pull up the, the addresses and, and review permit activity on those properties. If they saw that there was no permit activity, that initiated the code enforcement process, got the code enforcement officers out there with boots on the ground to verify that there wasn't illegal grow going on. The Planet program is a little costly, but it was a very effective tool.
And that, that's, that program is a real-time.
Real-time.
Based on satellite that's crossing by within a day or two.
Three-day, it's, it's a lot better than what Google is, six months.
Or more, sometimes, yeah.
Sometimes even more now.
Yeah, some of the photos are old, as old as our area plan.
Yes.
So, yeah, so.
So it was very effective as far as actually getting eyes on a property to see what the activity was and to keep, to keep track of any illegal activity. Because a lot of times, people would say, "Well, I'm not doing that." And you're able to pull up the imagery and be able to pull up a history of the imagery to be able to show, okay, by date, okay, this is what we have that's been happening with this property, and this is reasonably targeted.
Supervisor Simon?
Just had one question on that. When you talk about technology to help us out, now, it's my understanding that when you get a State Water Resources Board license, that they kind of have real-time also, too, correctly, to look at their property? Is there any way to reach out to them and do a coordination between the county department? departments instead of always looking at costs? If there's a partnership that could be done there and say, hey, could you share the information for these properties or licenses in our community? Just a question I ask on that, because, you know, that would, because they're supposed to be in real-time, from what I understand, just hearing about the, so I don't know, I'm just asking the question. But I do agree, technology would definitely help out, you know, our lack of resources. Now we're bringing the technology side, I think that's a great way to think about it.
Well, I know because of the vast area of land and the, basically wilderness for that area, for that county. State resources were utilized in Humboldt County, and fish and game were utilized in Humboldt County's technology for review of case.
Okay, so just, I was just thinking.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, just, okay, so at some point, when you say it's really, real expensive, I'd like to know what that is, because that's the kind of cost that you build into the abatements that you're going to find, let them pay for it. Obviously, we have to pay for it upfront, but then they get abated, they pay for it.
Well, I will tell you with what, I've kind of reviewed what you guys are proposing, and it's far less expensive than what Humboldt County's process is. They charge $10,000 per violation. So when they look at a property, they're looking at a grading as a violation, they're looking at the structure as a violation, looking at any outbuildings as violation, vehicles in the property is violation. If they're anywhere near any type of water streams, that's a violation. So you can have five, six violations at $10,000 per violation per day, and that's what they're charging up there. So with you guys hitting 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 for a third-time violator, it's far less than what other counties are charging.
You step that up, then.
I should say, some counties are doing 100, 250, and 5 under the state law government
code, too. So there's a, there's a, there's a big swath in terms of, right.
Wait, $150?
100, 250, 5 under state law.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the point of the unfair business practices references are to draw in fish and wildlife and Army Corps, and all of those entities can come in with their fines, and the fines under those actions can easily be $25,000 a day, sometimes more, depending upon the nature of the violations. Those unfair business practice actions, as indicated here, can either be brought by the district attorney's office, or if they're too busy and with their concurrence with my office, we're not too busy, we could do them. I've drafted complaints like that before, and they're civil complaints by nature, so that part of it isn't hard. The cost would come from the investigation, obviously, because you'd have to have the evidence. And again, just to kind of echo what Supervisor Sabatier has mentioned and what I mentioned initially, this is kind of an initial effort to gauge the board's consideration of this and willingness to move forward. There are a number of entities and departments that would or should have to be consulted in more detail, but, you know, that would be dependent upon whether your board was interested in pursuing something like this.
Okay. David, this program that you were talking about, did they see a decrease in the illegal market in their area because of this?
I'm sorry, say again.
Did they, with this program that you're talking about, did they see a decrease with the illegal market? Being able to view real-time?
Did their fee increase?
No, did they see a decrease in the illegal market?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Because they were able to surgically address specific properties, and by going after those properties, they were able to make a definition between the properties that were regular ag buildings and cannabis, and address just the cannabis properties alone. It served for several purposes. One was officer safety, because they're able to take and review an area and for, especially for code enforcement, when they're going out to a property by themselves, it gives them the opportunity to review the property and see, okay, what's my escape routes? If I'm going to this place, so I only have one road in, you know, what are my options here? So it gives them a lot better approach when they're initially going out to the property. The reduction in activity because of the fact that the county was getting more of a view on the illegal activity reduced the illegal growers in Humboldt County, so a lot more people were coming forward. Redway, they opened up a satellite office in Redway out there, because they were having so much problems in Alder Point, which is a primary location. So they opened up a satellite office to allow those folks to have an area to come to without having to go all the way to Eureka to register.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I'm happy where the conversation is going. There is something that came to mind that I think was also mentioned here that I'd like to add is the, some sort of strike system for those who are doing things illegally and bypassing our laws so that they don't get involved in the legal business of it. If you're not following our rules, then you're a bad actor, and at this point, we should allow the good actors to have access. We need to have faith and trust in those that approach us in the legal, and if, I don't want to do it a one-strike and you're out. That way, it gives a chance for somebody to turn and change. But at the same time, if you do three strikes or two strikes, I don't know what it is that we want to do, but I think that at that point, you are obviously not going to be a good actor, and we need to put you on a list.
I agree with that. Give them a chance to become, do it right, but after a while, I think we, we don't give them the chance anymore.
Right.
Michael?
Andy Williams, code enforcement manager, did have the opportunity to review this, and he would like to provide some comments if you'd like to hear them?
Please.
Yes.
If you could put the microphone towards you.
Andy Williams, code enforcement manager. Just briefly looking over this, a couple of things that I see that could be really important. The timeframes need to be shortened way up. Giving people 30 days will not work. We have been giving people seven days this year, and we're getting compliance. Also, hit them in the pocketbook. You know, these big illegal grows, $1,000, $2,000, that's just going to be the price of doing business.
And just to mention, there is the addition of the per-plant cost as well, so that all adds together.
That's going to be difficult to prove on an illegal grow, because they're not going to let us on the property to count stocks. We'll be able to see some, because we're going to be able to see it from our legal vantage point, but to get a specific, there's 10 plants, there's 50 plants, there's 5,000 plants, is going to be very difficult.
Gotcha.
Logistically, we could probably figure that out somehow, but in the beginning, it will be very, very difficult. People are on the illegal grow, they're not just going to go, hey, Andy, come on in, take a look, you know. But hitting them in the pocketbook and making the timeframes to abate as short as we possibly can on an illegal grow, I think is going to be the key. And they all talk. We get four, five, six of them.
Yeah.
Before you know it, they all know about it, and they know we're out there. And either they'll get better at hiding it, or they'll move on.
I agree with that, that we need to, that they do talk. And if they get the word out that we're on top of it, and you're going to get fined a whole lot, I think hopefully they will move on. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to say I appreciate all the comments made, and I'm hoping that the idea of how do we open the door for, to make sure that the water board, to make sure something in wildlife, I can't even think of it.
Fish and wildlife.
Fish and wildlife, thank you. Forgot about the fish. I think all those things, any way to open more doors, to make for more enforcement, is something that I would like to see returned to us in the ordinance, and I'm all for the increases and on cost and decreases on time as well. I know that when speaking with Ms. Grant, it was, how much are we going to give them, and how much time, how much, how much is it going to cost for them to do this activity illegally versus how much time are we giving them to fix it so that in court, it stands that this extra cost, we gave them this much time and they still didn't meet it, therefore that's why we can go ahead and apply this large cost. So I know that there's a balancing act that needs to be done to make sure that if we have to take this to court, that we can make sure and be supported by it.
Anita?
Yeah, the strength of an ordinance is always dependent upon how often it's been tested, not just the fact somebody puts something on paper. And there is obviously case law in the California constitution that have to be reckoned with, with all of these fines, fees, and time to correct.
So anything further from the board? I think I saw, was there public comment that, I know I closed it. Jessica, did you want to?
Just another of Jessica Pisca with Calvary Council. Just how to coordinate this with the community. I had a situation behind my house last week, and I talked to Supervisor Brown about it in the middle of the night. They had a bonfire where somebody was sleeping next to it and guarding something, and this was while the fire was burning. And I left a message with community development last Tuesday, and I haven't gotten a call back to even find out if it was a legal situation or not.
Okay.
I got a question about that, too. This may be on a separate topic, but I got to bring it up. What is the email address for, Moke got this, too, about the email being bounced back?
The CDD@lakecountyca.gov, that one?
Let's see. Do you remember what it was? The emails are getting bounced back.
I called community development, and then they, so I said, I don't know if this is a legal situation or not, and they said, well, call code enforcement if you know it's illegal. And I said, but I need to know if it's legal or not. And so they put me on, into planning. I left a voicemail, and no one ever called me.
Into planning?
Yes. So that was the process I went through.
Then I'll talk to you.
Okay.
So what would be the proper process for somebody to report? Would they get online and do a report?
Unfortunately, we get a lot of calls. Code enforcement, everything gets dumped on us, pretty much. A fire at 10, 11 o'clock at night, call the fire department.
So I did.
And they probably said, call code enforcement.
No, they went out, here's, well, go ahead, Jessica, I don't know.
So it was a bonfire behind my house.
It's a warming fire.
A warming fire that was massive, that burned all night.
That's why they excused it, though, because they said it was a warming fire.
So CAL FIRE went out and did a smoke check. Their engines couldn't exactly find it with the terrain, so my neighbor, who's a CAL FIRE battalion chief, drove out, saw the situation, and said, this is way too dangerous for me. And then we, I called Supervisor Brown, we called the sheriff. I watched the fire burn all night, no one ever came, so.
So he's a battalion chief of CAL FIRE, and CAL FIRE went out and didn't do anything?
Sorry, CAL FIRE did go out, and they called the sheriff, and it was a locked gate, and it was private property, and so.
Unfortunately, that's not a code enforcement issue. That's a.
Her concern was the grow, the illegal grow that he was guarding, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There were two issues. One was the fire, and one was the illegal grow, the grow.
So there's a verified grow?
No, I, that's what I was trying to find out.
Oh, okay.
I thought you verified it, sorry.
I think it is, but I'm not sure, and so I was trying to find out. The next day, how do I find out? What's the process someone from the public goes through to find out if this is a legal situation or not?
They would file a complaint online with code enforcement. We would go out, and if we could see it from our legal vantage point.
Okay.
Then we can take action. If we cannot see it from our legal vantage point, fortunately, there's nothing we can do.
Okay.
You could see it from her vantage point. She lived on a hill there, looking down at it.
It's a building, it's in a building.
Well, that's what I said, I said, our legal vantage point.
Right.
Okay.
Also, if it is, if it's legal, right, if it's legal, it would come to planning first, right? Wouldn't it come, wouldn't it come before a commercial?
Correct. If we had, with planning, you could check to see if we had record of an approved use permit.
Yeah.
That's part of our process. If I get a complaint for a cannabis grow, the first thing I do is go in the database to see if it's legal, or if we have any record of it at all. I do the research.
Yeah, isn't there, isn't there also a link on that, on that part for the public to see as well? I thought there was, but I may be wrong.
They can't look up the permitted.
It's just community growth boundaries.
Yeah, they can't look up the actual grows that are legal.
Can you tell the public, go back and tell them it's an illegal grow, or are you not able to give that information?
We generally don't call them back and say, oh, yes, that's an illegal grow next to you. We just take action.
Okay. But you do tell them that it's, if it is permitted and it's proper, you let them know.
If I find one that is permitted, I will call them back and say, that's a permitted grow.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
I know, just constituents, and, you know, when I'm contacted by that, I know at least in District One, saying, need the address, parcel number, you know, all that information provided in an email is to pass it along, that definitely helps the process. I know it has. And say, yeah, I appreciate you for getting that information, sending in an email, they can forward it on. That's, at least in the district, that's how it works. It doesn't work, you know, immediately, but I know it's, now the information's out there, and they can, like you said, they can start to do the check and say, oh, okay, this one may not be, that might be something we can get on the calendar. So I know that's been what I've been requesting of community members when they have an illegal grow. And some of them even snap some pictures, and, you know, they even do a little research on their own and say, you know, hey, here's the information on the property, here's the address, and then pass it along in that aspect. So that's currently at least what I've been recommending for folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
John Moss, I want to support the response I've gotten from code enforcement and from the Kelsey Cobb station. When I call the Kelsey Cobb station to say, wow, there's a fire, they immediately respond if they're there, and they go check it out. I've done that three times. And I had a Freedom of Information Act request submitted, and Mr. Williams responded very, very quickly. And the people in his department respond very quickly. And I want to support him, he's new, we're new at this. I'm very concerned about the honey oil development that's undercover. It constitutes a very public safety danger and danger of fire, and I think we all need to be aware that honey oil production can be fatal. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, is there anything further from the board? I think we do want to go forward with this.
I just want to thank Anita for moving this forward, and I appreciate the conversation and where I think we're all heading, and appreciate staff as well pitching in and offering ideas and advice. And I look forward to seeing this ordinance grow and come back to us in the future.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go to our 7.3 item, amendment, discussion and possible change of policy as it relates to our employee and their work situation during the times of disaster, PSPS, and their, and the relative events.
Yep. Yeah, okay. Do you want me to?
Supervisor Brown, why don't you go ahead and start?
Okay, so I'm not sure exactly what, what to expect out of this, other than maybe, you know, there's processes in place. I'm familiar that there are some, but it's a concern that I have after going through what we went through this last month, and specifically the last week of the month, where, you know, we got a lot of people, we talked about a lot of people that are, you know, vulnerable through PG&E's misguided approach to the way they handled the entire county. But what really struck me is a large percentage of our, of our employees were affected, and I just want to make sure that we have policies and processes in place to where we can accommodate them and work with them. And, you know, the scenario that we had was, I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know, I'm just trying to, you can get confirmation on this, but we, you know, it's not, it's not a secret that, you know, our employees don't make a ton of money, and for them to, you know, they get paid the first of the month, they go to the grocery store, they buy all the groceries they need for their families for the, for the rest of the month, and then on October 9th, power's shut off for days on end, and they lost, they lose a lot of that. And then I don't think there was a fire at that time, but then, you know, the power comes back on, they go buy groceries again, and then power goes off again, and then there's a fire. So, you know, with all that stuff going on, you can't get gas, and you got, you know, employees coming to work, spending whatever little bit of money they have left till the end of the month to get gas and stay in lines, and, you know, whether or not their kids are out of school, they got, they don't have daycare, and, and many of them from Moke's got, they don't have daycare, and many of them from Moke's district, they're up here working, wondering if they need to use the gas that they have in order to evacuate their families at any moment. And I just, you know, it really bothers me that, you know, all of us can do something about our lives. We can deal with stuff like that. But you have people in, you know, in our employ that we're to be caring for that really are, they're really vulnerable, you know, and they're trying, they're doing their best to make sure they're here for the public, and that's honorable. But we gotta make sure they're taken care of, too. And I know there's policies available, and department heads have some discretion, but I want to make sure that we have that, make sure. And if there's anything else that we can do, I don't even care if we need to do something to help them with daycare, if we need to help them with gas, you know, some way to get them through the end of the month in a situation like that. Hopefully, it doesn't happen again. But if it ever does, I don't want to say we should have done something. We've gotta, we've gotta help these people that are doing everything they can to help the public. When the Valley Fire happened, when the Clayton Fire happened, you guys know this, but the public doesn't always realize. We had people showing up for work, doing all this stuff for the public, and they lost their own homes. They continue to do that. And, you know, they're not advertising it or anything like that, but they do. That's the kind of people that we have. That's the kind of loyalty we have to the community. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we express that loyalty to them and do whatever we can to help them get through a situation that is, you know, a week with the lights out is like camping for me, but it's hell for some of them. So, I just want to have that discussion.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this to the board, Rob, because I know there are many different instances, and I did get, you know, just what is the current, I know we did some for fires and other disasters, but we don't have anything directly for PSPS currently. Carol, I guess I'm asking you on where we're at with policy. Would that be covered under any event right now?
So, we have the policy that is called paid emergency leave, through which employees can be granted some paid time during disaster or providing that they are available to respond to the disaster. And in the case of the recent event, it did become a disaster. And so, the way that policy works is I have the authority to determine if Pell will apply. And so, for the recent PSPS event, I communicated with all the departments and found out what, in what situations they had employees that should be given consideration for Pell. And I did approve Pell in a limited basis for those departments that were affected. Off the top of my head, I can tell you it was probation, because as the Chief Probation Officer reported to you, the generator failed at where he had his staff housed, and many of them were able to be relocated to other sites, but there were 10 or so of them that we couldn't find another place for them to be. And so, those employees would be entitled to paid emergency leave for the time that they couldn't work. There were also, there was one employee in another department that lives in Santa Rosa and was evacuated from the home and also had animals to move. And so, that employee would be eligible under a different section of the policy. It's called home emergency, because the home was under emergency. So, there were a limited number of scenarios like that involving 15 or 20 total employees where we did grant paid emergency leave. As far as scheduling and work hours, the county personnel rule 1700 already allows for several different schedules. Employees can either work a five, depending on what their department allows, of course. They can work a 5.8, a 4.10, or a 9.80, or another schedule approved through resolution. So, like for instance, I believe the deputy sheriffs do have some 12-hour, 3/12s. The hours, the schedule that departments work, it's not specific to the actual hours of the day. So, department heads have some flexibility if somebody's circumstances at home because of the PSPS prevented them from getting to work on time. If the department had wanted to allow them to later that day to make up their time that day, the department head already would have the latitude to do that. And I imagine some of that has taken place or does take place when those kinds of things come up. However, we couldn't carry those hours over into a different week, because then you'd be exceeding the total hours per week and probably getting into overtime issues. Fortunately, this last event was isolated to one week, and I haven't heard from department heads specifically, but I'd be willing to guess that some flexibility under the policy was allowed. So, I don't know if you want me to go on and...
No, I just want to have a specific, because I had to get an email from, you know, from one of the employees. And, you know, the question directly was, you know, obviously, you have the ability not to come into work, but you have to use your vacation or sick time. And, you know, the one question was, you know, a lot of our employees are living paycheck to paycheck, and this is how they take their vacations and off times. And so, now they're being punished by the PSPS, or if they gotta take work off because their kids can't go to school, or, you know, a situation where they have to use that sick time. Would there be an opportunity maybe to think about where, if someone's in a situation, they say, you know, "I can't come in. This is why the PSPS is going on," but we'd be able to let them opt out so they don't have to use up their vacation pay or something in an instant like this? So, that was a specific question. I thought it was a great thing. Everybody's in their own situation. I know that may be difficult, but I at least want to ask those questions, because now we're almost, "Yeah, you can take it, but you gotta use your vacation time. You can't come into work." So, we're almost punishing them for something they're not in control of. It's PG&E. So, anyway, just a specific general question, and I thought it was a good one, so I wanted to raise that today.
And you might remember that during the River and Ranch Fire, our policy was written differently, and we changed it, because basically what happened during the River and Ranch Fire emergency, the way Pell was applied, an employee that was available to work or came out and worked in the disaster got paid the same as somebody that was completely unavailable. So, everybody was entitled to paid emergency leave, whether they were available or not. And certainly, in that disaster, there were many good reasons why people weren't available. People, you know, people were scrambling in many ways. But there were also people that just simply were not in communication at all, and so, we had no idea what happened to them. And so, after that event, we narrowed the policy, because it didn't seem fair to pay people for, you know, having no clue what they're doing or where they are when other people are working day after day in disaster situations, or staying by their phone so they could come in. So, we did change the policy. It was in the fall after that event. So, that's where the policy stands right now.
Because I think we were afraid that the next emergency, nobody would show up to work, because they're gonna get paid whether or not, and then it doesn't matter if we have generators here, because we don't have anybody working. Supervisor Brown?
Well, this, okay, this is like the last item that we had about the ordinance, what, you know, making ordinances without having input from those who have to actually enforce it. It's the same thing here. I want to open up, you know, and you can reach out to department heads and say, you know, "What were the issues? What, you know, what is it that we can do to help our employees, knowing that this, that's, you know, that's a concern of ours?" And I think rather than, you know, some of the stuff I've mentioned may not, may just be scratching the surface, and it may be, those may be isolated incidents. I don't think they are. But I think we should, we should reach out to the, to the departments individually. They know their people. They know the circumstances that they were under, and they can probably report to us better what they think would be the solution for it, then we could just come up with it up here. So...
Absolutely, I will. I did reach out to the department heads specifically in relation to Pell, and whether or not employees should be considered for paid emergency leave. And the responses I got back were from the vast majority of the departments, that thanks to the generators being in place, most of our employees were able to work. But that doesn't mean that employees didn't also have complicating factors, like what is the genesis of your agenda item, where they, you know, they couldn't work, even though we had power here, they couldn't work because their child couldn't go to school, or, you know, that sort of thing. So, that's a different question, and I'll absolutely...
You know, and we don't have, you know, we're always a little cautious about flex schedules and things like that. But in this situation, I think we need to look at that. You've got people, you know, they're leaving their house in the dark that time of year. They're staying here. They're going home in the dark, and it's dark. There's no, there's, I mean, it's, we have to be, we have to allow ourselves to be flexible, being mindful that, you know, there's always going to be some level of abuse of that. That's just the way it is. But for the most part, you know, 99% of our folks always want to do the right thing, but they shouldn't be penalized for that as well. So...
Supervisor Sabatier?
So, you actually just said the exact statement I was going to make is, during our workshop that we did, was it in March or May, with the CSAC person, Bill Shaitt, at the end, we talked with department heads, what are things that you would like to see changed, and flex schedule came up. And I know we're not here to do any kind of negotiations, and it's not a certainty of what's going to happen or what can't happen. But I think during a PSPS, what I would like to know is, what was the level of service that was needed? Did we see a huge decrease in people coming in to ask for services, because they were also experiencing PSPS at their homes, and they needed to take care of their own personal stuff rather than their business or whatever else? Because if we see a level of much lower need for services during a time of PSPS, then we can say, "Hey, flex time might be available during PSPS only," instead of saying, "Flex time anytime you want," just to limit it as to when they can have. Because if you know that you have help for your kids over the weekend, and that you can go to work on the weekend while you're taking care of your kids during the week, because they have, they don't have school during a PSPS, then at least we're giving them that opportunity to still get their hourly wage, connect with their families, and provide whatever is needed with their families when the time in need comes. I just think it's something to think about, and I'm going to put it out there as well. My experience in business has always been to have a remote access to my computer, and I think that we need to look at that. Obviously, IT needs to make sure it's safe. But if you can stay at home and still do your accounting stuff or your analysis stuff from home on your computer by going through remote access, then people can continue working from home, taking care of their families, and not have to leave and be in a bind. And I think that we need to use technology, just like we talked earlier, to make that possibility as well. They're getting their hours done. And again, during a PSPS, I think it's just an honesty rule. Yeah, you're in a bind. You don't have to come in. You can come in at another time. Yeah, you're in a bind. You can work from home. We expect you that you will be working, instead of just telling us that, because it's not going to be for a full month's worth of pay. It's going to be for the time that's in need. And so, I think it's those kinds of possibilities.
I like Supervisor Brown's suggestion of going to the department heads and trying to figure out what it is that they feel we should do.
I know that my, just thinking of, sorry, I didn't put my...
Go ahead.
I'm sitting here thinking of different options, especially in a situation like this. And I keep, in my head, I keep running into, I know that what I want to promote runs into labor laws and state laws and things like that. My experience, I don't, I can kind of avoid some of that. So, that's why I'm just going to wait until this takes place more, because I'd like to offer solutions like some outside-of-the-box type of accrual of time. You know, we have a lot of people that, you know, I ask to come to town hall meetings, or I ask on weekends to come and do things like, you know, shoreline cleanup or community cleanups or things like that. After-hours type of things people do. And I'm just thinking of ways, like maybe we can accrue us another pot of time, because this is supposed to be the new norm for PSPS. And, you know, that time can be used for things like this. I bet, then again, it runs right into, in my mind, I'm thinking, I know once I say this, it's going to run into labor laws and things like that, but...
If I may?
Yes, Anita.
Labor laws give to public funds issues. What it depends upon is what you, what you want to solve, how you want to solve it, and how you set it up. So, it's really going to, you know, the old saying, "The devil's in the details." That's really where this is. So, you know, some things might not be doable as proposed. They might be doable another way. There's, but there are issues, you're right, that have to be addressed.
So, on a note related to that, Supervisor Crandall, I was recently at a meeting with a lot of my peers, and we were having some discussion about employee benefits and incentives that counties offer. And a couple of counties talked about a program where employees are allowed to serve one day a month, doing, like an eight-hour day, doing some sort of community service in their community. And they're allowed excuse time and to go do that. And so, it was a way to give back to the community. It's a, it's a thing that the employee would have to apply for, and it would be approved as a bona fide activity. But you mentioned the roadside cleanup and things like that. I mean, I'm not suggesting a particular one, but it sounded like that sort of thing. And they said they were having some success with it, and that it was meaningful to employees who really want to give back. So, we're absolutely wanting to look at those sorts of things and have more discussion with our employee groups about those kinds of ideas.
And most of them are already giving back.
They are.
And so, they would be eligible for that.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, and I think, you know, the one thing that compounds this whole situation is obviously, we're in the middle of the PSPS, but then we had evacuation advisories, our warnings for both Cobb and for Middletown. And, you know, that puts a different light on it. You know, it's one thing to leave your children home when you're working, you know, when they're out of school, if they're old enough, 13, 14. But when there's an advisory or a warning, you know, that puts a whole different aspect on things. So, I just, if something can be brought back and talked about those determinations, I, you know, the opting out, so they're not, we're not, you know, giving them an opportunity in those situations, at least to have a discussion. So, appreciate it.
I think, too, it's like, some people have their kids stay with family, you know, grandparents, aunts, uncles, things like that, and they stay working. They're away from them. Other hardships I've heard about was being, and this is a whole nother ballgame. I'm just, you brought this up, so I'm just throwing this out there. Some folks have mentioned, you know, being paid possibly twice a month rather than once, and I don't know where that goes anywhere. But that's, for the folks that work for us, that's another thing maybe to talk about eventually, but just putting those things on the table as well. So...
I don't remember if I opened up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? If you could please state your name, and then you have three minutes.
Ann Prain. I'm here because last, last week, we had a meeting, and there was going to be an effort to get PG&E to pay for all this, and go down there to the PUC and hand them a letter personally. I don't see any of that followed up on here on the agenda.
This isn't that part of that discussion.
Well, it's not here. Where is it?
It's the next, it's 7.4.
Yeah.
It's our next.
Okay, good.
It's a different item.
Any other public comment? Okay. Then bringing it back to Supervisor Sabatier.
I just want to say, I appreciate the item being brought to the board. I think it's important for us to discuss the employees of the county and how things that we're dealing with affect them as well, and not just how we see it from our own personal perspective. So, I appreciate that.
You think further? We're gonna go...
You follow up with them.
I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay. Our 7.4 item, consideration of appointment of two supervisors to serve on a committee with two city council members from each Clear Lake and Lakeport to develop, propose, and demand solutions to PG&E impose public safety power shut offs. So, we kind of had this discussion last week about having two members of our board sit on this committee. So, let's have a discussion of who we feel would be the best.
Well, I'm going to throw my name in the ring, you know, just because I don't, I don't know that I have any more qualifications than anybody, but I am interested in it. So, the one thing I would like to add, and this certainly not meant to disparage anybody at all whatsoever, but when the cities have people, they have people from the cities. So, that is a consideration for the two supervisors that actually represent the cities. So, they do have somebody, two people for those cities. So, just throwing that out there.
Supervisor Sabatier?
In response to that, this is not to benefit any one jurisdiction over another, so it definitely doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't make a difference. But I would like to also throw my hat in there as well, as I would love to fight this battle.
Supervisor Sabatier? How I feel about this whole situation. I made that very clear, and...
Yeah. I don't think there's anybody up here who's not interested, that's for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will go either way, whatever the board's going with, but I will let you know. Continue this, and every opportunity, go down and speak in front of CPUC or work with Carol to get them up here to have community, whatever it is. They're not going to get off the hook.
Let me ask a question, since I have everybody here. I received a letter from the, from somebody from CPUC. Did anybody, oh, so you all, okay. I'm just making sure we all.
Carol got it. We all got it.
Yeah, I've been in contact with that guy since right after the October 9th PSPS.
Okay. Because usually, when they send a letter to all of us, you can see who was sent, but it seems like it was all separated, so I didn't know who actually...
It was personalized for each one of us, but yeah.
Okay.
But as you recall, there's also that meeting coming up on November 18th. There's, I was just checking, the agenda's still not posted. It's the Senate Energy Utilities and Communications Committee that I've been advised will be an opportunity to testify Senator McGuire's on that. I'm still in communication with their staff to get that agenda. The CPUC, if your board determines that your members are gonna monitor some of those meetings or speak on behalf of the county, the upcoming November 7th meeting, of course, doesn't include anything specific to PG&E, PSPS. But, but it doesn't have to, because they have public comment at all meetings, and you might want to consider having your members deliver the letter in person, the letter that you approved at your special meeting on the 31st. That we're in the process of getting all the signatures and would have those by that time.
I think that's what we kind of discussed that we wanted to do, is be able to go to public comment and deliver that letter. Anita?
I did have Nicole in my office double-check with the CPUC this morning, in addition to the materials I'd sent you. And the Public Advisors' Office is the group that manages the speakers and comments. And she was told the commission will hear any topic subject to its jurisdiction. Won't stop speakers from coming in. speakers from commenting. Government body representatives are allowed to speak first, which would be you, and everyone who comments during the comment period will get three minutes. Again, there's that caveat though, if you're late, you only get one minute, so you're punished. She also said that you can provide written comments to her office to put into the record, even if you don't come in person, so you've got options there.
But there's also the comment in there that said if more than one person is speaking on the same subject that you have, you have one person.
They encourage that.
They encourage.
But apparently, and, and you can't speak to this with certainty, but they do give some deference to elected officials, given your position. But again, the, the commission controls its meetings, just as you do, so.
Maybe Joan can go.
Or however long you wish to speak or how you wish to present this, it appears that they do give you some deference as elected officials.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yeah, so I was thinking about, sorry, I just got thrown off, but, so we have, we need two representatives and on many occasions, we, we are part of different committees. And so is there a possibility to have an alternate so that, because I, I've seen three people like ready to be appointed right away. And so is there a way we can appoint two and have one as an alternate in case someone else is at a different meeting or out of town or something like that? Is that a possibility?
I think you absolutely could, yeah.
Okay, and then that way, yeah, that way it's set.
And I believe if we do that, I think we need to notify the cities that we're doing that and giving them the option to also. I don't know, I believe the city of Lakeport's having their meeting tonight on this item.
Obviously, if there are three of you, one is an alternate, you have to avoid consensus.
And the city of Clear Lake, I believe, would be appointing theirs, is it the fifteenth?
The fourteenth is the current date unless they decide to do a special meeting earlier.
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, obviously too, I was just talking about the, not only the C P U C meeting at down in San Francisco on Thursday, I was still planning on attending and do public comment. When it's ten A M., we'll make sure that I'm there beforehand, you know, that was my intention. And then on, as far as the eighteenth with Senate hearings and stuff, I know we already had previous conversations after the October ninth event with Senator McGuire, that I was definitely interested in anything that he would be setting up as we move forward. So just want to get that out there and make sure we stay on it.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I just wanted to make a comment and I'm going to try to, I, I think it relates to this specifically, but the meetings that we go to, I want to make sure that we make a concerted effort to, to have a cohesive message and not a personal message, one, one that really moves forward the needs and of the county. Right now, we have a letter. I think that letter is exactly what we should approach this meeting with, because it's so soon, we're not going to be able to meet. But before the next meeting where we choose to go for public comment, I really hope that we have this committee meet so that there can be that messaging that's been created and decided on prior to us continuing to go, because we can't say the same thing every single time we go. It has to be constructive and it has to move us in a direction, but we need to have that direction from this committee we're trying to create. I think the letter has already been approved by that committee by having all jurisdictions approve that letter, so I think it's a good start, but I'm hopeful that we can convene this committee as soon as possible so that prior to the next meeting, which I believe is the thirteenth, that we have a new message to start sending.
Is there any public comment on this item? Sorry you had to wait so long.
So Anne Prain, and the last meeting that we had on this, you had expressed the desire to have members of the public also show up at Thursday's meeting when you hand in the letter. I would like to know, we have people that want to go and the idea just to fill all the seats and boo and hiss when it's appropriate and, you know, not necessarily to line up and fill their ears, we want to support the letter. I have not heard the letter yet, I have not heard what the letter that you received from the P U C contained, and I'm wondering what your public outreach is, how you're letting people know that there's a meeting and, and to invite them to go. So, you know, and, and have the letter available for people to see and have the correspondence available, just so we know what we're going to. And, yeah, I mean, just what's your outreach, what's your correspondence, how do, how do we find the information in timely way, not next week when we get the minutes or whatever?
Okay, the letter that, the email that we received basically is they just wanted to sit down and talk with us, is basically what the email was. Our letter, where can she get a copy of that, is that online and their last agenda?
It's in the process of being signed, but we can give her a copy in our office. It's not signed yet because we had fifteen signers, so we're chasing them right now.
So they can get you a copy across the street?
But if she goes and asks Carolyn Purdy in the admin office, Carolyn will make her a copy.
And if we do decide to go to this meeting, how are we going to let the public know that they're going to do this?
You haven't decided yet that you're going?
It's not going to be, it's, it's going to be members of the board going, if the public wants to go, they'll, they can go. It's not going to be like we're going to jump on a bus.
Okay, well, we didn't want to go if there was not going to be a letter and the board there.
Well, there's definitely a letter, there's a letter and we're deciding right now if we're going to be going.
And what is this meeting, on the eighteenth, where's that?
That's in Sacramento, the Senate hearings, right, Mo?
Yeah.
We don't have the specifics of that meeting yet, it hasn't, the agenda has not been posted.
There's one in San Francisco this Thursday at ten A M., there's another one on the thirteenth in San Francisco at ten A M., and then it looks like there's another one in Sacramento towards the eighteenth.
Okay, so we're planning to be at the one this Thursday at ten A M. and there's a van of us going and, and I think that if the word got out, I think an immediate response, like we were talking last week, where we're going in because we're angry and just fill those seats, it's, next week is like losing momentum and the next week is losing momentum. And if you are giving a letter, I think it's great to have the public involved and I'm not going to try to get, you know, I've, I've already done my part getting my neighbors, so, you know, please put out something somewhere where people can find us.
Okay, and who's, what, who would be your supervisor, I mean, we can have your supervisor contact you.
Mo.
Mo, so maybe contact Mo and maybe he'll let you know exactly what's going on.
Well, what about the other neighbors, what about everybody?
If you go to the C P U C website, you know, it gives you the dates and times of all the meetings for public comment. I mean, that information is there.
Yeah, but you should be, if you want people to show up, you should be saying, people, this is happening, show up, and it should go out to people.
And that was our meeting intent last week, obviously.
Yeah, so where do we find that? Yeah, is that all we're about?
If you contact me, I'll get to the C P U C website.
And we're going to.
I've got that.
Anita.
The one thing I just wanted to make clear here is the agenda for the C P U C for Thursday the seventh is already published. This letter is not going to be on the agenda, it's not going to be an item for discussion. It would only be a member of your board presenting the letter during public comment or just speaking and submitting the letter, you can submit that regardless of whether you're, you're present or not. And other members of the public can offer their comments, but it won't be a discussion item with the C P U C.
They may not even answer.
Well, they won't be able to answer.
They won't answer.
They won't answer, because it's public comment.
No, but when it's handed in, there should be a lot of people going.
I agree.
That you, I think you could use that.
If I could add to that in terms of practicalities, having the letter ready on the seventh, I mean, certainly, the letter has been approved, but now we're in the process of getting fifteen signers to sign. And Lakeport is signing this evening when they come for their board meeting and then the lever, the letter will be delivered to Clear Lake to obtain their signatures. Whether or not we can work with the city of Clear Lake to catch up with all five and get it back to us by close of business on Wednesday, I don't, I don't know, but we'd need to in order, if somebody's taking the letter, we need to do that.
Supervisor Sabatier, could you be in charge of doing that?
Go for it, that was my response.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good morning, Chris Macedo from the Sheriff's Office. To follow up on Supervisor Sabatier's discussion, to keep the conversation fresh, for some future discussions regarding this issue, I've been speaking with a friend of mine who's retired division chief with CAL FIRE and under California Public Resources Code Section forty-two ninety-one, there's some mandates that public, or not public, but entities such as P G N E is mandated to keep the vegetation under their infrastructure trimmed and abated to prevent wildfire and stuff like that. And perhaps some, some future dialogue should include that that, why isn't that happening? And it makes mention in that section that a director of a, sounds like a government entity, and I'm assuming that maybe CAL FIRE has the ability to go in and do the work such as code enforcement does locally here and then file a lien against the, the entity for not, for failing to do that, so it may be appropriate to look further into that section and find out if that is the case, why CAL FIRE is either not finding or going and doing that work and follow up on that and see if some pressure could be put on the state to make sure that P G N E is following up and doing some of that abatement work on these lines to prevent some of these wildland fires from occurring in the future. But it's Public Resources Code Section forty-two ninety-one and it's starting to become a popular discussion item as more of these fires occur.
I know Supervisor Brown brought that topic up last week about.
Yeah, and it's, it goes to that same discussion, you know, we create more and more ordinances that aren't being enforced. CAL FIRE's had the ability to do this, we've got a, we've got a hazardous vegetation ordinance that we went through this exercise, CAL FIRE wanted us to do it because they don't want to do their job. And I, with all due respect, CAL FIRE and all the guys that are, you know, fighting and doing all this stuff, the red hats, you know how they are, they do nothing. And, you know, they, they need to do their job and step up, and I agree, we need to hold them, hold their feet to fire as well.
Yeah, and maybe it's time to take that conversation upward with our legislators and find out some answers. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I was Simon was first.
Supervisor Simon.
You know, and we're talking about whether or not the letter is prepared at that time to go down on Thursday, there's an opportunity for public comment, it's only three minutes, but as we said, I think just putting a face to this, every meeting, no matter who goes, I think it's the right thing to do. So obviously, twin messaging, having opportunities and demanding what's going to come forward, I think this meeting, my thought would be just saying, hey, whether that letter's there or not, something's coming, believe me, Lake County is not going to put up this, we're going to move forward in whatever direction we can and we are going to demand some type of answers and results and we'll continue pushing that. So that was my intention for going down this Thursday, I think there's an opportunity and really put a face to, you know, the people that are being affected to that. And that really will be my message as we go through, that was my thoughts and just beginning and having it rotating, I think is a really good thing, you know, if they see a different face from Lake County every time with different demands and opportunities and letters and follow-up information from all the folks affected here, I just think that that really puts us, you know, one step ahead of, you know, everyone else. So I just feel important to that, you know, and it needs to be done.
So basically, finish every comment with dot, 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 to be continued?
To be continued, it's just the beginning, you know, we're here and we're not going away, so, and working it up the chain, obviously, of course, you know, I think that's a great thing, you know, there is a new board that I am new on, which is the State Board of Fire Services and other things, every conversation we can have, we'll definitely start having those conversations, deal with these issues.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I, I just put up my pen for one thing is I, I just, I'm not trying to patronize anybody, but the approach that we bring to the C P U C, if we share anger, if we share emotion, is very, can carry a different result of what we're looking to get from the C P U C and more can annoy them than build a constructive relationship where we can try to solve problems. And I think that that's where the letter comes in, that we, we can reach something, that we can stay level-headed about it. The hissing and the booing, like that worried me when I heard that, because I don't want the C P U C board to say, you know what, forget Lake County, they're just here to yell at us. Yelling is not going to do anything, I'm sure everyone is yelling at the C P U C right now. They're, they're in a spotlight that they've never seen before in their entire life. And I think we need to, we need to understand first who they are, what are, what are their goals and vision as a C P U C board member and use that to our advantage to get what we want from them. Some of them want environmental justice, some of them want low-income access, blah, 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 whatever it is that they're spotlighting, that they're looking for, we need to figure out how to match it so that that's what we're looking for as well and this is not happening. But I, I think that when I heard the hiss and boo, I just got worried and I wanted to make sure and say that we need to be careful how we approach it, because we might actually harm our ability to get something constructively done. I think our, our better bet to get things done is through Senator McGuire's meeting that he's putting together, which is not necessarily his meeting, but the meeting he will be a part of. But I think it's good to approach the board, but we need to approach it and we want to partner up and work together to make change.
Supervisor Brown.
Well, I just, you're right, there's an approach, this is not a march on City Hall type approach that needs to be taken, it's not going to be effective. We need to, we need to get our message across to them loud and clear, but I think you're right, we need to, we need to, you know, they're dealing with stuff that, C P U C doesn't just deal with P G N E, you know, they've got water districts, they've got, you know, trucking industries, they've got, you know, anything that has to do with providing a service to the public up and down the state. So even though it's a big deal to us, pretty, pretty low level on theirs, on their end, they, they didn't have generators and they had power, so that's the way their, their world is, so yeah, it is a little different.
Anne, did you want to come up and?
I just have a question. Do you not want us to go? We have to get up at five in the morning to go, we're trying to support you.
Yeah, I'm not going to say one way or the other, I mean, I think any member of the public should, should use their own, follow their own heart on that, but I've just, I think what Bruno is saying, you know, I was going to say he's trying to say, he's saying it pretty loud and clear, it's not going to be as effective as some might think to this, to this particular audience.
So better to go to the one on the eighteenth? I mean, you know, like, we, I'm responding to what you said last week about it would be great to get the whole community to go.
Right, okay, so everybody could fill out a public input form and you could get, you could get up and speak to public input.
Do you want us to go?
I'm, I'm not going.
Do you want us to go?
That's really up to each and every one of you.
Okay, so I'm.
For Lake County at this point.
Do you want us to go?
At this point, I'm going to speak in the three minutes comment, so if you're there, I think that's great, if you're not, that three minutes is going to happen anyways.
But I think what Bruno was saying, if you do go, don't hiss and boo, maybe just be supportive.
I said appropriately. I did. Okay, and I can get the letter over here, right? Across, across the hall, across the hall.
Have, have somebody from your group put in a, put in public request form and speak on your, on behalf of all the people that are there. I think that's, I think it's highly appropriate.
Okay, okay, thank you. Joan Moss, before any supervisor says CAL FIRE is not doing their job, I think we need to look at how many thousands of acres CAL FIRE control burned in the Riviera in the last year. I don't think we need to become a lynch mob and threaten to, to throat punch somebody. I don't think that's positive or collaborative. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
I don't think they did any control burning in the Riviera.
There's nothing further than we need to decide on the two, and a motion of the two people that we're going to put.
Two plus an alternate?
If you wish. Two plus an alternate.
I will gladly take the alternate, just to simplify the process of choosing who's who.
Well, I will gladly take the, the other side knowing full well that the alternate can have it real soon, so. Forty-six more meetings.
How many?
If we ever get done today.
I believe by being a member, you just added to that number.
So then, I need a motion then?
So I, I will move to appoint as delegates Moak and Rob and as an alternate Bruno Sabatier to the group, to the, what is it called? Count, the, the two supervisors to serve on a committee and alternate to serve on a committee with the two county, city council members from Clear Lake and Lakeport to develop, propose and demand solutions to P G N E impose public safety power shut offs.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye. And opposed, motion carries. I believe we've done all our open session items. With that, we will go into closed session. Our eight point one item, conference with legal counsel. that, we will go into closed session. Our 8.1 item, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Governance Code Section 549, 56.9, D2, E3, Claim of Robinson, 8.2, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Governance Code Section 549, 56.9, D2, E5, on potential cases. Put that for in closed session.
Madam Chair, just a quick typo. It's not Robinson, it's Robertson, but with that it can go forward.
Close session.